Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March sixteenth meeting of Fitchburg City Council. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I now call this meeting to order. Counselor Schultz, will you please lead us in salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
The following counselors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Zarella, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kucher, Counselor Dean Natale, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squalia, Counselor Van Hasenga and Counselor Walsh.
Thank you very much. I would like to request unanimous consent for suspension of all rules of this body or of our parliamentary authority which are in conflict with either the remote participation format or the state guidelines on remote participation during the COVID nineteen pandemic. The objection? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended as noted. Public forum, the public had been advised to contact clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments of no more than two minutes and the following have been brought to our attention. We have Mr. Anthony Roschella regarding the zoning on the central business of the Central Business District. This actually is a public hearing item, so if you don't mind, Mr. Roschella, I will call on you during the public hearing for the zoning. Mr. Floyd Morrison has a concern about lack of completion of trees. Mr. Morrison, if you're there, what item on the, what agenda item does this pertain to?
Hi, we got a notice of the hearing for laying out of Tibbetts Circle.
That will also be a public hearing then, so I will call on you at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have a few others who have not indicated specific items they'd like to speak to. Mr. Eric Lottie also relating to the zoning. And a few who have joined simply to listen in on the hearing. So with that said, we will move, we will move on and take a report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Kucher.
Thank you very much, President Zarella. Earlier this evening, the Pittsburgh City Council Appointments Committee took up three appointments. First of all, the reappointment to the Assistant City Clerk's position. Ms. Amanda Alford, which was approved. And two new appointments to the Airport Commission, David Genici and Ms. Elizabeth Walsh, which were both approved. You're muted.
Thank you very much. The matter is for the council.
Move to approve.
I believe that I have to recuse myself, so I'm going to bow.
Thank you. And then I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we will take it under unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, the report is approved and Vice President Walsh, you may return. I will just remind everyone again. When I, if at any point there is any objection to unanimous consent, please enter it in the chat as I cannot necessarily see all counselors on screen at the same time, given the number of attendees we have. Now, we will now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Hughes.
Yes, Mr. President, at this time it appears all records are in order. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is no objection, we will accept the report by unanimous consent.
Motion to accept.
Seeing no objection, the report is accepted. We have communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Ms. April Al, excuse me, April Maldonado to be reappointed as a member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire January first, twenty twenty-three. New appointment Attorney Christine Tree, new appointment as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire April first, twenty twenty-six. And new appointments of the following three Fitchburg State University Police Officers as special police officers for the city of Fitchburg. Officer Richard Nelson, Officer Joshua Fulmer LaFleur and Officer Courtney Soares. As I am currently employed with Attorney Tree, I will note that these are to be referred to the Committee on Records, but if anyone has a motion, I'm sorry, to the Appointments Committee, but if anyone has a motion to the contrary, I will recuse for that motion to be considered. Seeing none, moving on, we also have a, the annual report of the Fitchburg Fire Department for the year twenty twenty. If there is no objection, we will waive the reading and place that on file with the city clerk. Seeing no objection, it will be placed on file. A report of the Finance Committee, Counselor Dean Natale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on March ninth and took up the following matters. Thirty-four dash twenty-one was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar available funds transfer to the stabilization fund. That was adopted four to one. Thirty-five twenty-one in order to transfer thirty thousand dollars from available funds to facilities, tax possession, maintenance, and that was recommended favorably unanimously. Thirty-seven twenty-one was a transfer from available funds of ten thousand dollars to human resources, personal services, overtime. That was recommended favorably unanimously. Thirty-eight twenty-one was a transfer of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be charged against reserve for snow and ice removal and credited to the following Department of Public Works snow and ice accounts, and they're listed as follows. That was recommended favorably unanimously. Thirty-nine twenty-one was to accept a, thirty-nine twenty-one, forty twenty-one were both safer grants, safe grants from Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the Fire Department for teaching fire safety to children in elementary schools and educating seniors in the community regarding fire and life safety topics. Both of those were recommended favorably unanimously. And the last item was a communication regarding the year forty-seven Community Block Grant Application. This vote we took in batches. Overall, we bear with me for one second here. So the Public Facilities and Improvements Batch, that was recommended favorably as proposed by a vote of four to one, by a vote of five to zero for all the projects other than Project C, which was favorably recommended by the committee by a vote of four to one. Public Services, the Public Services Batch was approved unanimously. The Economic Development Batch was approved unanimously for all the projects other than Project Q, which was voted favorably three to two. Rehabilitation and Preservation, that was unanimously approved by the committee. Clearance Activities was approved by the committee four to one. And Planning and Administration was approved by the committee unanimously.
Thank you. It is before the council.
Mr. President.
Counselor Boishman.
Mr. President, I would like to look for on this before we vote, a separate vote on thirty-four twenty-one. I got a question for thirty-seven twenty-one. And on the, on the, on the forty, year forty-seven, I voted into a quarter few of these and I would like to vote some of these out that I voted on, no. And I'll ask anything else that I voted for except for those three.
So what is your motion, Counselor?
My motion is to pull all thirty-four twenty-one. I got a question on all thirty-seven twenty-one. And part of the forty-seven budget, CBG.
So may I take that as a motion to approve the recommendation as to thirty-five twenty-one, thirty-eight twenty-one and thirty-nine twenty-one?
And forty twenty-one, yes.
Yes. All right, I have a motion and second to approve the recommendation of the committee as to zero thirty-five, zero thirty-eight, zero thirty-nine and zero forty twenty-one. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. The remainder is before the council.
Motion to approve the recommendation for thirty-four twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the recommendation for zero thirty-four twenty-one.
On a motion?
On the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On a motion, I voted against this three hundred and fifty thousand going to stabilization fund. Is I bid, I feel that we could have brought back the four employees from the DPW. I understand that I like to save money too, but the city's in dire need. I keep on repeating that we need the help and we just can't keep on waiting. So that's why I voted against that. I'm all in favor of saving money. I like saving money. And but at this particular time, they want you to pay being shortchanged, I feel at a residence of Fitchburg. So that's why I voted no.
Thank you, Counselor Dean Natale.
Well, the residents aren't being shortchanged unless you want to blame a pandemic that's been the worst pandemic in the last century. The stabilization funding was numero uno on the DOR's recommendations to the city in two thousand and eight. The reason why the city was near bankrupt twelve years ago and had junk bond status is because we had ten thousand dollars in our stabilization fund, ten thousand bucks. So this appropriation now more than ever needs to be made in order to maintain that minimum DOR recommendation of five percent. This strengthens our bond rating, this puts us in a position to weather emergencies of a one-time nature. This money should not be pitted against. Your support for it means you're not for adding people to the payroll. This is the last thing you use payroll for is free cash and forfeiting stabilization. So the committee by a four to one vote recommended this favorably. And to not put money in stabilization at any point, anytime, every year, is not a wide decision on the city's part or we doomed to repeat our history that I don't forget. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just reiterate that aside from any issues of where exactly we spend our money or what we do with our stabilization funds, as a general budgetary principle, we can't fund a recurring line item out of available funds. We, I mean, we can legally, but it's a very poor idea to do so because that recurring line item will still be there next year. We don't know whether those available funds will be there next year. So I would also like to bring back a lot of the, you know, cuts that we've had to make due to this pandemic. But free cash is not the way to do it. That said, I have a motion and second. I'm going to wait just a moment. Counselor Hughes is having issues with his connection. I'll give him about a minute to reestablish before we take a vote or ask for objections. I see Counselor Walsh had her hand raised.
That was an error, sorry.
No problem. Actually, you are the first one I've seen who figured out the hand raising functionality, so.
I fell upon it.
I would ask that people generally not use that because I almost didn't notice it, so. All right, it looks like we have Counselor Hughes back. All set? All set, excellent. All right, so Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for this motion?
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Hi.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Thank you. President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
No.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
That is ten to one.
Motion passes. We now have before us zero thirty-seven twenty-one.
Move to accept the committee's recommendation.
On a motion?
I have a motion and second. On the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion, I'm going to vote for this, but I got one question and I'm asking you, Mr. President, if we can get some kind of documentation, the interest ends up to be about two hundred dollars a week. I'd like to know exactly how much overtime they work, that they work per week? And where do they work the overtime?
We can certainly ask that that information be provided in the future. Certainly, I'm sure if you contact City Hall, they can probably get that information for you fairly quickly. But for the moment, if that's, if that is your only concern, I see Counselor Dean Natale would also like to speak on this.
Ms. Davis, the Human Resources Director was at the committee meeting to field questions from the committee and explained in great detail what this money is being used for and why there is a need for overtime when there hasn't been previously. And she did say how much, many hours a week this person was working, anywhere from five to seven hours a week in overtime. So she already answered his question and he was there at the meeting. She also explained what they're doing. They're now functioning as the sole source use of workman's comp throughout the city, which is where it belongs, HR, not with Treasury. And that was a decision made between the HR Director, the Auditor, the Treasurer and the Mayor. And she is now responsible for thirteen hundred school employees' workman comps matters in addition to three hundred and thirty city employee workman comp matters. So the overtime is justified now as before it wasn't because of that as the main driver. So the, the information he requested was already provided in the meeting in public session. So I don't know if he's going to learn anything new from his request, but these questions were already asked and answered. Thank you.
Thank you for refreshing our memories on that, Counselor. I did not have that in front of me myself, but.
Mr. President.
Just a moment. First, I have Counselor Kucher.
Thank you, President Zarella. I was not aware that this was due to them taking on workers' comp responsibilities. Being an expert in workers' comp law, I know that on the employer's side, it is a huge responsibility and sometimes will take a whole department for somebody that employs the amount of people as the city of Fitchburg does. With a company that size, it would take a tremendous staffing to do that. And to have one person doing it with a little bit of overtime. I mean, you, you get what you pay for, folks. So, but I'm going to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Counselor Green. I am just going to remind people, please use the chat box only to put in your markers because not everyone sees those pop up on screen. So we shouldn't be using them for any communications that the public should be hearing. But Counselor Green, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I did just want to clarify to make sure that I was hearing Counselor Dean Natale that there's, there's thirteen hundred members from our school department that are in or have workers' comp claim. What's the number from school versus what's the number from city employees? And are we, are we dividing them or are they all a city employees?
If you would like to, you may respond to that, Counselor.
Counselor Green, I should have been more clear on that. What Ms. Davis was talking about is collectively she is in charge of sixteen hundred employees.
Oh, that make up our city, okay.
Right, six, thirteen hundred from the schools, over three hundred from the city.
Okay.
But within that sixteen hundred pool employee pool, she is now responsible for any and all workman's comp matters within that pool. Whereas before she was only responsible for the three hundred and fifty on the city side, if any came about. Now she's in charge of the schools departments as well. And that was one of the main drivers of why her staff person is now working more, more, more time than, than, than what we planned for. And they're also doing things that they weren't able to do prior to this person coming on board. When, if you recall, for the last twenty years or so, we had one person in HR, not even two. So since this person came on board a couple of years ago, she's gained more experience and gotten her feet wet where she's now able to branch out and attack things that we weren't normally attacking, which workman's comp is one of the major ones that she's assisting with. But it wasn't thirteen hundred workman comps cases, God, no.
Okay, my God, I was almost freaking out. All right, thank you for clarifying that. I, that's why I asked because I was having a little bit of a freak out. Thank you.
Thank you. And, okay, so Counselor Dean Natale, I'm just going to note, I'm not counting Counselor Dean Natale's response to Counselor Green against his ability to speak to the matter. You have the floor.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'll defer to Counselor Kucher and then Counselor Boishman, and I'll go after those two.
Certainly. Counselor Kucher.
Actually, I was going to defer to Counselor Dean Natale, so you can forego my, my, my response. Thank you very much.
All right then, Counselor Boishman.
I should wait for Counselor Dean Natale to talk, but I'll talk. I got nothing to be afraid of. Hey, listen, the reason, number one, I just want to say something. I forgot, I didn't, or I didn't hear Ms. Davis says she was working five to seven hours a week. That's number one. Number two, since she told me that, that means to tell me that the lady that used to do this in the treasurer's office may not have enough work to keep her as a full-time employee. So that means we can make some cutbacks. And I like to say thank you, Mr. Dean Natale, for enlightening me that, that I didn't know that came out of the Treasury Department. So now that I know that, and she was a full-time student, I mean, a worker there that took Ms. Little's place and Ms. Little's was doing work with comp cases paperwork. I guess we can make some cuts when the budget comes around. Thank you, sir.
Counselor, we will be happy to look at any cuts that you propose when the budget comes around. That said, we now have a motion and a second. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I was supposed to come back around to you, Counselor.
So I, I think it's, with all due respect, I think it's premature and rather inappropriate to even make a statement like that when we're talking about a specific person in an office. She, she may be watching this meeting and just heard that statement made. So I, I, I will say this. When you have an organization under new leadership, they do what is called a review of resource requirements. And in this case, between several stakeholders, there was a determination made that workman's comp belongs with HR. It isn't because the payroll office was sitting there overworked or because now they're able to, you know, go to the park every day for two hours and, you know, not even work. The payroll and benefits office handles payroll and benefits for hundreds of people. Workman's comp belongs with HR. This move was not made because the treasury is, it has too much or, or now they have too little. So this decision that was made was not made so we can open the door to reducing a position in the treasurer's office. And I look very much forward to Ms. Cervantes pushing back on that statement because unless you understand the full breadth of what payroll and benefits deals with, you'll understand that two people for an organization of almost four hundred is not a lot. So I, 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 I hope we remember that in the future. And I want to apologize to the person who's in that office who just heard what she just said. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and thank you for the reminder as well. It is a good reminder that we should not be talking about specific individuals unless their jobs are actually the subject of discussion before the council. Just as a general matter for future reference. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Hi.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yep.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming. You're muted, Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Yes.
And Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Motion passes. I will remind people as a Zoom functionality trick, if you are muted, you can hold the space bar to speak briefly rather than searching for the unmute button if you're in a hurry. That said, Counselor Dean Natale, if you wouldn't mind giving us the report on the CDBG again, one section at a time, and we'll vote on each section.
Sure, Mr. President. I don't know if you want to take up each section for a vote on the recommendation or the whole package.
Given how many items got pulled out, I think it might make sense to take up each section.
Okay, so please bear with me, counselors. So the first, the first section was Public Facilities and Improvements. There was the, so if you're looking on your, I, I don't know if people have the minutes or the package in front of them, so I'm going to assume you do. Project A, North of Main Downtown Cleanup for twenty-five thousand dollars. Project B was Sam Pollock Community Playground for sixty-five thousand dollars. Project C was Streetscape Improvements for seventy-five thousand dollars. Project D, Park Hill Improvements was thirty-seven thousand dollars. Project E was Day Street slash Snow Street Sidewalks, forty thousand dollars. Project F was Fitchburg PD ADA Parking, one hundred thousand dollars. And Public Arts Project, Project G was fifty thousand dollars. The actions the committee took on this package for Public Facilities and Improvements, we recommended favorably the projects, all projects in this package other than C by unanimous vote. Project C, Streetscape Improvements was favorably recommended by a vote of four to one.
Thank you, Counselor. With that said, unless anyone has anything else they would like to pull out besides Project C, I would entertain a motion on Projects A, B and D through G.
I'm moved.
Second.
On the motion?
I have a motion and second to approve the recommendations of the Committee on Projects A, B and D through G. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
All I want on that motion, sir, I'm not going to argue, but on, on Project A, the mayor, the mayor told me, you know, if I went along with, which I went along with because he agreed that they would take care of River Street and I want to record to state that that River Street would be taken care of on this project on A. That's all. You don't have to, I'll accept that on A, all right? And everything else except for C, that one I'll talk about.
Noted and logged. With that, we have a motion and a second. If there is no objection or any further comment, we will take it by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We now have Project C, Streetscape Improvements for seventy-five thousand dollars in front of us.
Move to accept the committee's recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
Speaking on the motion. I'll, I'll say it again, on, on C. I'm all in favor of a two-way Main Street. I really believe that we're moving too fast on Bowdoin Drive. I believe that if the goal is to develop downtown and make it the tall buildings residential, which I hope they're going to plan on doing, people are going to want a place to hang around. I think we should take our time. It's been a proven fact already. We already had a one-way Main Street with a bicycle path. In the beginning, it was chaos. But once everybody started getting used to it, there was hardly no cars going up Main Street. You cannot run a business without people. If there's no cars going by, you're, it's like putting a shopping mall out, out in Ashburn on my lower knuckle where there's no cars and you're out, up in Ashby, I'm a lower than our cake, where there's no cars, and you expect people to come. It's not gonna happen. I feel that Boulder Drive should be held off. I see how this works out for us, and let's go from there. I think we're making, again, I repeat, I believe we're making a big mistake. I think we should slow down on Boulder Drive, and let's focus on Main Street and get that running proper, properly. And that way there, if we have to block it off, Boulder, uh, Boulder Drive and the area for functions and everything, with Riverside Park, we can do it. So, that's how I feel, and I'm gonna vote no on that one, C.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no further comments, I have a motion and second to approve Project C. If there are, uh, and I will ask, uh, for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Hi.
Counselor Ben Hasanga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Sorella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
No.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
That is ten to one.
Thank you, uh, and Counselor Gina Tally, for future packages, I think if you, uh, just know which ones are being pulled out, we can probably go that way.
Okay, just, 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 okay, I, I, you don't want me to read them all?
Not unless anyone else would like them all to be read.
All right, um, next package was Public Services, and the committee's recommendation was to, uh, favorably recommend all projects under Public Services by unanimous vote.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and seconds to approve all projects in this section. If there is no objection, we will take that by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. Counselor?
Uh, next package was Economic Development, um, uh, all projects except Q were unanimously favorably recommended by the committee. Project Q, uh, Fitchburg Downtown Coordinator for thirty-five thousand, that was favorably recommended by the committee by a vote of three to two.
All right, uh, if, if no one has anything else they would like to pull out, uh, I would suggest that we address Projects O, P, and R first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve Projects O, P, and R. Speaking on the motion, if there are no objections, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. Uh, Project Q.
Move to accept the committee's recommendation on Project Q.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion.
Speaking on the motion?
Counselor Boishman.
I voted no on that. I feel that at this present time, until businesses start picking up downtown Pittsburgh, then I'm gonna vote no on it. I don't think we need it at this present time. There's no sense of having it, and, uh, and that. Too many storefronts, I know people are not gonna like it, empty, so that's how I feel on that particular issue, and that's how it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just note, uh, that part of the point of this position is to aid in driving business downtown, and that this is really a short-money line item, um, when it comes to the amount we're expending for CDBG and the amount that the city budget comprises, if we can spend thirty-five thousand dollars to get even a small boost to our downtown economy, that is almost certainly worth the investment in my. Uh, that said, I have Counselor Ben Hasanga.
Uh, thank you, Mister President. I'd just like to note that in times when the economy is struggling and businesses are struggling, this is a time that we need this position the most. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Gina Tally.
I mean, several years ago, prior to most of you being on here, we had a downtown coordinator, and it was only for ten thousand dollars, but it was extremely part-time, not, not a lot of time. Because of budget constraints, the position was removed. That used to be funded through the city budget. Um, it was restored under this administration through CDBG, when Fitchburg State University offered a partnership for this effort. Uh, so instead of it being a city employee part-time out of the city budget, it's coming out of CDBG, and it's largely being administered by FSU. Um, last year, if you recall, folks, we voted on the year forty-six CDBG package. I, I believe it was the last meeting we had in person before we were shut down because of the pandemic. So there was some arguments during the committee meeting that this position wasn't necessary for fiscal year twenty because of the pandemic, which you could make an argument for that Monday morning quarterback, um, because some people were saying there weren't a lot of events this year. Actually, there were no events this year. But we didn't know that at the time of approving the, the funds, and Director Skorsky explained what this person was doing besides that component of it. They were doing a lot of other things with small business assistance. Um, this year, as we're turning a corner on this pandemic and we're hoping to reopen more fully, pending the governor's directive on March twenty-second, now it's not the time to now get rid of it. This is when we should keep it. Um, and, you know, I, I, I said it in the committee meeting, and I was very passionate about it, and I'll, I'll say it again tonight. You know, with all due respect to people who like to keep pointing out that we have vacant storefronts on downtown, I don't know why for the life of me people are not more positive about downtown. Maybe I'm Pollyannaish. I don't think I am. We do have downtown storefronts that are vacant, yes. We also have businesses in downtown that are new and that have been there for a long time. So when we say things like this, it doesn't help them in the least. Okay, we've had the El Salvadorian Market of Chex, we had Beyond the Rest Restaurant, where Superfans used to be initially, we have Dario's expanding in downtown soon. Dario's bought Beamer's Pub, and they're calling it Taco's Tequilas. You got Urban Fork, you got Moren Square Rehabilitation, uh, Revitalization, you got the Moren Square Rehabilitation and Harper Building. You got Summer Street getting repaved next year. You've got Snow Street Development, thirty-five million coming up. You've got, um, uh, City Hall, the Idea Lab, the Theater Block, BF Brown, Ivor Johnson Crescent Building. I'm getting sick and tired of hearing about vacant storefronts in downtown. It's time we be positive.
It's all.
Thank you.
We have someone in the background again, um, could we just be cautious about that, please? Someone's discussing, it sounds like politics, uh, not local politics. Uh, anyway, uh, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, I'm, I also voted against it at that time, but I've since reached out to, well, uh, Mr. Skorsky reached out to me to further explain, uh, about this position and what it entails and, um, you know, what are the things that they expect this to happen down the pike? So this time, I'm gonna withdraw my objection to that.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Green. Counselor Green has stepped away for a moment.
You're muted.
Sorry, um, I did just want to clarify that this position, I believe, was at first funded through Reimagine North of Main, pre-COVID pandemic, and the progress that was made under the direction of that position, um, was huge. It was huge for the positive strides of downtown, so I don't want us to lose that as we're getting to hopefully get ready to peak and blossom again on what could be a thriving downtown again. So I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna pull the knees from out from underneath this, um, especially where we're making a comeback, so I'm in favor of funding this position. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have Counselor Boishman.
Yeah, I just got one thing to say. I want to make it very clear, because I am miss- I am very positive. But I just want to mention that when, uh, when we hired an economic developer way back when, the vast majority of you counselors were not on the council. And that co- that economic developer was supposed to be handling downtown. That was the whole purpose of us hiring the economic developer, was to start focusing on downtown and to get it moving. So I just want to get that straight, and then after, and then after, after TB, is it TBI? Mister, uh, Torres came down, that's when the university started asking for money for a coordinated downtown Pittsburgh. They put in half, and we put in half at the CBG fund. Thank you very much.
I, I'll just note, those are two different positions with different job descriptions, and I would say that our Economic Development Director has done a very good job of improving downtown so far based on the development we're currently seeing. Uh, that said, I have Counselor Gina Tally for the second time.
Yeah, we hired a, a Economic Development Director, not an economic developer. And, um, the coordinator is not, does not have the same function as the Economic Development Director. The coordinator is just that, a coordinator. She assists small businesses that are currently existing. She coordinates, assists with coordination of city events. The Economic Development Director doesn't do any of that stuff. Um, and, and, and so, and, and the, and the economic, and the, the downtown coordinator is specifically focused on downtown. The Economic Development Director is the entire city, everywhere. So, it, this was a targeted, focused approach with the university's help to assist small businesses and coordination between those businesses and the local government, as well as events that will be taking place this year, hopefully. And if not, it's no fault of our own, but that was the purpose of the coordinator position. So they probably work hand in hand in some respect, but the Economic Development Director has far more scope of work and far more reach throughout the city than just focused on Main Street. So I just wanted to make that, that critical distinction between the two. And again, we used to pay for this position out of our budget. This is now coming from the feds, so, you know, people had a problem with this position from a budgetary perspective, and one of the big arguments against it before that was it was only for ten thousand dollars, and the coordinator barely had anything, didn't, didn't have enough, enough funding to do what she needed to do. So that's why that was put, put on the shelf, and then it was revived when we decided to use it out of CDBG. So that, that's the history of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I just want to say that I, uh, I'm in favor of retaining this position. I, I agree with Counselor Van Hazenga that, uh, we, now's not the time to, to pull that position when we're trying to recover from a pandemic, so I will be supporting this, uh, this, uh, director's position, coordinator's position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, if all have been heard, uh, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Hi.
Counselor Ben Hasanga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Sorella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
No.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes. Counselor Hughes, you, you muted, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. That is ten to one.
Thank you, motion passes. Uh, Counselor Gina Tally.
Uh, next package was Rehabilitation and Preservation. There were only two projects, and there was no objection from any of the committee members. All favorably recommended both projects.
It is for the council.
Motion to approve.
So, I have a motion and second to approve the Rehabilitation and Preservation Package. Speaking on the motion, if there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Counselor Gina Tally.
Next one was, uh, rather, uh, interesting in that it was a clearance activity package, which we've normally put money into. This year, it's at zero, so the committee really couldn't uh, vote to do anything with zero, uh, because we can only cut like with the budget, and then, you know, throw it back at the mayor to reallocate. But since there's no funding here, um, there was really nothing to vote against, but I still asked the committee for a vote of, you, you know, to accept the line item, and the committee by a four to one vote accepted clearance activities at zero dollars.
Thank you. Uh, before there is any motion on the table, it looks like Mr. Skorsky would like to comment. And as the, uh, Community Development Director, I will allow him to give us the benefit of his expertise.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Um, just briefly, um, we had proposed, and, and the mayor had recommended zeroing out the demolition round for this year, and, and the explanation was similar to what Counselor Van Hazenga had, had mentioned earlier. In a time like this, we really need to build things up, not knock things down. Um, and it was a tough decision, but we also, you know, couldn't make a determination as to where else we should cut in the budget. And this seemed like the best sacrifice in the short term. But again, it's the pause, it's not a, a, a complete stop on demolition, and a question was posed as to how much the city has devoted towards demolition in the last five years, and I just wanted to, um, just state for the record, over the last five years since twenty sixteen, we have demolished thirty-one structures and prepped one site, eighty Lunenburg Street, for environmental remediation and ultimately development, um, at a total cost of two-point-six million dollars. So that's just the last five years. We've made significant investments above and beyond that. Uh, those investments, I don't think even include the Palateer Building on Water Street, for example, among others. So, you know, we have a long history of investing in demolishing blighted properties. We certainly hope to continue to do so in the future. Again, given the circumstances, we're just hitting the pause button this year. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will note for my colleagues that there is no legislative action which we may legally take on this item, uh, because it has been zeroed out by the mayor, so while I will accept comment from the council, no motion will be in order, because there is nothing we can do except accept it. Uh, Counselor Boishman.
I was the one that said no on that. I believe that we should have put funds in it. I understand what you're saying. I understand what Mr. Tom Skorsky's saying, but let me also point out to you that a lot of the buildings that we tore down, we tore down, were not out in the inner city, uh, in the neighborhoods. They were, uh, city buildings that came down, and tax collection buildings that came down. So when you tell me that you tore down buildings, you tore down the buildings that you wanted to tear down, because it was easy for you to say, let's tear it down. Nobody's gonna give us an argument, and that's it. But when you go in the heart of the neighborhood, we don't tear down that many in the hearts of neighborhoods that should come down, and you get a return, and I'll repeat it, you get a return on your money when you tear them down in the neighborhoods that makes blight areas in your neighborhood. You get a return. So that's why I, I felt the way I do, and I still feel that way. The return is a lot greater than a little bit of money, a lot greater. Because it makes the people in the neighborhood, in that neighborhood, want to fix up their property. Because now you get the blight property gone that was affecting you, and a prime example would be Nashville Street, when the city took that forty Nashville Street down, and really, they should have taken all three down. Well, two, two of them, one, ne- one, the next one next to it should have came down, and that would have made a big difference in that neighborhood, even though the other one on the corner was coming down anyway. That's how I feel, and that's why I voted that way, and I maintain the way I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I see Counselor Gina Tally. I'd just like to note briefly that taking down buildings that we own or can easily acquire title to is many, many times cheaper than trying to acquire a building for the purpose of taking it down, whether that is done via eminent domain or via some sort of hazard condemnation. Either of those processes are considerably more expensive and take usually a fair bit of legal wrangling. Um, so frankly, the seventy-five thousand dollars that would have been allocated to this item would likely not have been sufficient to pursue demolition of a building that we do not own without also incorporating some city budget money into that. Um, that's just the way it is. It would be nice if we could say, this is an eyesore to the neighborhood, let's knock it down. That's just the way it is. It would be nice if we could say, this is an eyesore to the neighborhood, let's knock it down. But if it's not our building, then there's a lengthy process that we have to go through in order to do that. That said, Counselor DiNatale.
Well, you know, we, we have knocked down buildings in residential areas. River Street was one example, right before, right after Dairy Queen on the left. All right, we had, we knocked down, I forget the property in Ward 1. The bottom line is, we, we have knocked down residential areas, but you know, I guess some people think that we should knock down everything tomorrow, you know? I mean, what, what, what drives me crazy is, we were just told by the director that we have infused almost $3 million in five years on urban blight removal. I don't think we spent $3 million 20 years prior to that. In fact, I know we haven't. So we have aggressively attacked urban blight in the city for the last five years as evidence of the fact that we've spent almost $3 million and over 31 properties are gone, 31. And so we're hitting the pause button for one year. I mean, you listen to all of those facts and then you arrive at a conclusion that we're either not doing enough or we should keep going. I mean, 31 properties in five years, $3 million, when before that it was barely anything. So that's why the committee gave its blessing, if you will, on the $0 value, because we're not saying stop. We're saying, okay, you guys have taken care of 31 properties and $3 million. And Mr. Skorsky said in the meeting too, that and Liz Murphy was there as well. They're still knocking properties down, down this year. They're just not attacking anything new yet. I mean, there's still some properties from prior years there, they're in the process of taking down prior year money. They're just not infusing any new money this year and $75,000 is not going to get you anything. So, I mean, there were a lot of properties we took down as a community in the last five years that, 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 that really gave a poor image of the city. Who cares if they were in residential neighborhoods or in non-residential neighborhoods? I would argue in the non-residential neighborhoods, even more people in the city saw them. So again, I feel like every, every matter is an issue. Even when you say you've spent more than you have in the last 30 years, it's never good enough for some people. Thank you.
Thank you. That said, as I noted, there is no action we can actually take on this item. So if there is no one else wishing to speak, we will move on to the next section. Counselor DiNatale.
Last section was planning and administration. This is for the administration of CDBG in Mr. Skorsky's office. For $197,317 and this was approved unanimously.
Thank you. It is before the council.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. Thank you. That concludes the report from the finance committee. Moving on, we have a public hearing. This, this public hearing will encompass 02421 and 02521. Both regarding the laying out of Tibbetts Circle as a public way. Oh, I'm sorry, the public hearing is on 02421. For the laying out of a portion of Tibbetts Circle as a public street or a way, reference petition 227-19. I now declare the hearing open. Any person, do we have anyone here who is representing the petitioners in this matter? I don't see any. That being said, I will, oh, I see Mr. Nick Erickson. You can unmute and give us an introduction to what's going on here.
Thank you, President Zarella. The motion you have before you is to lay out Tibbetts Circle as a public way. This particular street has been on DPW's agenda to adopt as a public way since I started with DPW in 2016, I believe, or shortly thereafter. DPW engineering has gone out to the roadway, inspected it, ensured that it meets DPW standards. Or at least it did back several years ago when the street was fully constructed. Since then, obviously, there's been some normal decay of the roadway. The pavement's obviously not in newly constructed condition, but it is acceptable. Beyond that, it meets DPW standards and we're recommending that this be accepted as a public way.
Thank you. I have, I had someone, ah, yes. Mr. Dan Fitzgerald is registered to speak at this public hearing. Mr. Fitzgerald, if you're still on the call with us, you may unmute yourself and address the council. I do not see him on the calls. Oh, yes, Mr. Fitzgerald, I still see you. There you are. You are still muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, so I guess, so I guess the main question that I have is, so I, I live on 86 Tibbetts Circle. And it's right at the bend as you go around up into the back. It, the, the road never did meet from a level standpoint and there's a lot of potholes and in the wintertime that area floods and gets all iced, iced over as well as in the summertime, gets flooded with rain. Back when Dean Tran was here, it was thoughts of putting, or talk of putting a storm drain there, an additional storm drain. I'm just curious if it is deemed a public way. Is there an ability now to utilize, you know, that, that function to get that area of the road fixed?
Mr. Erickson, would you care to address that?
Yes, thank you, President Zarella. So we were not aware of these issues, but certainly they, they will receive attention once they, once Tibbetts Circle is accepted as public roadway. Some of these defects, I, I'm not sure exactly if they started immediately after construction or appeared sometime thereafter. But according to the notes that I was handed down from my predecessor, Tibbetts Circle at the time that he inspected it following construction, did meet the, the Pittsburgh DPW engineering standards. So that's what I have to go by right now, but I can assure you that after it's accepted as a public road, it will be treated as such and any drainage or other concerns will be addressed as we, as our, our budget and manpower allows.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Is there anyone else in attendance from the public wishing to address this matter in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, oh, I have Mr. Floyd Morrison. Mr. Morrison, you may unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi, my Zoom just cut out. I live at 172 Tibbetts Circle and I am one of the last three houses on the new portion of the road. I think this is the portion of the road that you're looking to adopt. There's, this is tree lined road up here, both sides. And these last three lots do not have the ornamental trees in front of them. So I'm not sure who that falls on. The numbers are 156, 157 and 172. 172 is our house. Also, there was some patchwork done, all, there's a single, one side of the street has a sidewalk and there was some patchwork done across from us on the sidewalk side that was not done in concrete. They patched it, they, part of it was damaged to excavate for the last two lots. And they did not replace it in concrete, they replaced it in, in hot top. I don't know if that's acceptable to the city, but you know, it kinda, it goes from concrete to hot top and back to concrete. It's pretty noticeable from a, you know, homeowner point of view, investment in property. I'm not too pleased about it and I've never been able to really get an answer on the trees.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Mr.
You're muted.
You're muted. Anthony.
Sorry, I clicked it the opposite way around. Mr. Erickson, you, you look like you would like to respond to that.
Yes, thank you, President Zarella. Regarding the, the tree clearing, the city of Pittsburgh is obviously responsible for tree clearing that encroaches the roadway and the city's right of way. So I'll personally look into that matter, you know, this week when I get back into the office. Regarding the, the asphalt patching of the sidewalk, that does not meet city standards. And we will look into our permitting database to see who may have excavated into that sidewalk and try to, you know, see if there's any way we can get those people to come back and, and patch with concrete and do a proper repair. We have a permitting process in the city that ensures that our contractors restore sidewalks and streets to our specifications. Obviously, it wasn't involved in this case, so we'll look into that.
May I speak to the trees again?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Morrison. The way we do public comment, there is no back and forth. But I will address, I know you had mentioned there were ornamental trees that were not placed as were apparently supposed to be. That, I could be wrong, but that sounds to me more like a subdivision issue than a city issue. It could also potentially be a planning board issue, but that is, that's something that if you would like to contact one of us outside of the meeting, I'm sure we could help you run that down. But I don't think it's something that the city DPW would be responsible for. Is there anyone else seeking to speak on this matter from the public? Seeing none, I will open it up to the council and I believe I first have, excuse me, Counselor Squallia.
Thank you. I had gotten a couple of calls on, from residents of Tibbetts Circle asking me, what does this mean? And I, my understanding was basically that the residents won't see much change from this. They'll still get their trash picked up, they'll still get their snow plowed. The only question I had really was if the ornamental lights that are there will now become city property? But I was just hoping that Mr. Erickson could just give a brief statement, basically, so the residents know what this actually means for them.
Mr. Erickson, go ahead if you'd like.
Yes, thank you, President Zarella. I believe some of the streetlights out there that are within the city's right of way are owned by the city, but there's also a handful of residents that have what I would consider to be driveway lighting, which is accent lighting for the driveways that are tied directly into their houses. Electricity, you know, their, their house's electric wiring and it's not tied into the city system. And those would be considered owned by the homeowners. So we have had some calls to DPW in the past to inquire as to whether DPW is responsible for maintenance of those. Based on my research, it indicates that those type of lights that are tied into the homeowner's electrical system are their responsibility, whereas the street lighting within the city's right of way is tied into our lighting system and is our responsibility.
And to the, to the second part, kind of what does this, does this change anything for the residents that they'll see?
Well, as far as roadway maintenance, plowing, all that good stuff, I believe we've been maintaining that roadway as a public street anyways, with the expectation that it would be accepted at some point. But I think the residents should feel free to contact the city if any of those streetlights go out and they need assistance, at least the ones within the public right of way. If they have any questions about drainage or patching potholes or snow plowing. Because after the city has formally accepted this roadway, all of those things will fall on the DPW as the responsible entity essentially.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman.
I have a question. My question is, I remember when, I think Counselor Dean Talke is where there's still, when Counselor Dean Tran put a petition in, because it was flooding at the end of the street down there. And I, I thought it was fixed, I guess it's not. But I, I got a question though, as, as from Mr. Erickson. I'm going to give an example. I, I have a hard time accepting the street. The city accepts a street when we have to go back in and put thousands of dollars in to rectify a problem. If you, if you're selling your house and it's only 10 years old and a potential buyer comes in and he has it inspected, you're required, if he wants it fixed, you're required to fix what he wants and you don't sell the house. I don't understand why we're not doing the same thing here, where we have a, we already know back when Counselor Tran was in office, that there was a problem with the roadway down by that area and it was flooding out. And, and I don't, and, and I brought it up before, why are we accepting something that we are, it's no sooner do we accept it, we gotta go right up there and, and invest money? I understand that people have been using it for the last 10 years, but that's not my fault. The developer didn't get down there and get it approved as a street and hand it over. That is not my fault. So why should I take, why should we take the development's problem, where we already know there's a problem? That there's either a drainage or the road's not made right in that area. And that's the only thing I, I have to say. And, and we knew about it six, seven years ago. When Senator Tran was on the council. So that's it. On that, if Mr. Erickson can answer that, if they help me clarify that in my head, I'd be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Erickson, if you'd like to, you can certainly address that.
Yes, thank you, President Zarella. Counselor Boishman, to answer your question, so I, I have to go based on the notes of the predecessor of my position. And at the time of construction, he certified that everything was built to DPW specifications. If there were problems that arose between that time and when the flooding was identified and attempted to be addressed by Counselor Tran, that's, that's not something that I can verify was a problem that's attributable to the developer. That might have been something that arose after the fact. Typically, developers have a, a one year or so warranty on their work and then, you know, that's, that's what they're legally liable to come back and defend. Since it's been so long since this road has, was constructed and even quite some time since, since I've, I've taken over the position of my predecessor, I kind of have to go back on his notes and realize that at the time of construction, it was built to the city's standards. Some of the flooding issues that have cropped up since then, we don't know what the cause of it is. Like I said before, I'll look into it and we'll have to address it, but it's not something that I have any concrete proof to attribute to the person that built the roadway. Because I have that inspection by my predecessor following construction that says everything was built according to city specifications and standards, there were no issues. So I, I hear what you're saying. I understand that taking on a problem is not something that's ideal, given our limited budget and manpower. But it's not something in my mind that would be enough to say, no, we cannot accept this as a roadway. I think it would be unfair to the people that live on this roadway to continue to defer ownership of the road and put the responsibility of fixing those problems on them. I'd rather fix those, fix those problems ourselves and get these people, you know, back into a comfortable living situation.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Solicitor Pus Terry, you had a comment on this issue? You're muted.
I hesitate to be inconsistent with, with Nick Erickson here, but if it is something that you feel that there are problems, the council would be advised to perhaps continue the hearing. And we could go back to the contractor to take a look at what these particular problems are that the, that the residents brought to your attention. I think that in part, that's one of the reasons. I think that in part, that's, uh, one of the reasons that we'll have a hearing like this. Uh, so to flush out those items. So that's, that's an option that your council would have. Uh, I would, uh, like to remind, uh, council that this was a petition that we approved back in 2019. And, uh, there was some issue on, um, uh, completing the deed correctly and have an appropriate description. And there was a number of other delays, some of them not relevant to this particular project, but that kept us from getting back to it. This is a petition that came back before the council. I, I'm not aware of hearing any of these objections or concerns at the time that, um, that we heard this back in 2019. I don't have a perfect memory, uh, but, you know, had we been aware of these, we probably could have taken some time. Cause we've been interacting with the, with the developer's office. Um, regarding the property. So, uh, I'll leave that into your discretion, uh, with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Walsh. I'm sorry, I didn't skip you. I just wanted to make sure that if Solicitor Pusatary had something immediate to respond.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to let, uh, uh, Mr. Morrison know and, and the others on Tibbet Circle, if they have questions. Um, I, I'm the ward counselor for your ward and I would be more than happy to, um, uh, speak with you tomorrow and, and help you, uh, go forward with any other issues or questions that you have. Uh, my number is nine seven eight three four five four five two six. You should feel free to call me or email me at ewalsh@fitchburgma.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Uh, and I have Counselor Gina Tally.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna accept this tonight. And I actually, shockingly enough, I agree with my colleague from Ward Two that something's not right here, uh, to me. We, we have a process in place, and while I understand Mr. Erickson's position, cause he wasn't here at the time. And he assumed the duties of his predecessor who retired. I find it, and it's hard for me to think this is a coincidence that after that, all that work was done, all of a sudden flooding magically occurs. I mean, I know we can't ask questions of the residents on the call. But one question to pose is, was this flooding an issue before the developer finished? And I believe in my recollection, there was no issue over there with flooding until this was finished. So whether we certified it's okay or not, I, I'm concerned that the fact that we did that and it's in writing, that the developer will point to that and say, don't come looking at us. This is your problem now. You guys accepted the work we did. But I find it hard to believe that this flooding was an issue before this work was done. That, that to me is a big coincidence if that were the case. So I agree with him in the sense that developer finishes, we accept it and then flooding magically appears. And now we're gonna be in the hook for fixing it? Uh, and, and by not accepting it as a public way, I'm not saying I want the residents to fix it. I, I wanna get answers first chronologically of what's going on here. Because I do recall vaguely, Counselor Tran did put something in about the flooding. But I think at the time that he put it in, it was given leave to withdraw or I may have been held, I don't have the backstory because the, 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 the way, the, the, the area was not accepted as a public way. So that's why it was premature to put that in. Um, and that's why it didn't, nothing came of it. But the flooding was raised as an issue several years ago. How it didn't get to any of the appropriate channels in the city is beyond me. But I remember hearing the same thing and I am all but convinced that flooding is a result of that development. And so before I put my stamp of approval on this, I wanna get the backstory and the information. As the solicitor said, that, I mean, we can go back to the developer and, and see if we can work something out or see what's going on here, but you know, between that and the sidewalk not being patched up to city spec, I'd like to know who did that work? Was that this developer? Was that another contractor? If it's another contractor, was that part of the work itself or, or was that a completely separate matter? If it's a separate matter, then the city will deal with that separately, but on the flooding issue, I'm not gonna accept this as a public way until we at least get some chronological information on what took place and whether our engineers can ascertain if this is a direct result of the development or not. And then we can work out later on who's responsible, but for right now, those answers have to be, questions have to be answered before I accept this as a public way, before the taxpayers spend money on this, which I think would not be right if that were the case. And with respect to, um, losing my train of thought, so, so the, so the, the work that was done there, we need to understand um, if it was caused by that developer through the analysis. But my concern is the fact that we already put our stamp on this. I don't know if our hands are tied now because of that. So we may have no choice but to spend the money to fix it. But I would at the very least recommend that we get a full report on this in terms of what our engineers are able to discern with what's going on over there. Who is responsible? Whether the developer is legally responsible or not, I wouldn't know if they're responsible. Okay? And then we gotta figure out how to fix it. And I understand that DPW is not a lot on their plate, but, you know, this is a special case where no problems were existing and now there are problems there because of this. Again, I don't think it's a big coincidence, so I, I'm not gonna support this as a public way tonight until we get those answers. But I think the backstory of it was Counselor Tran didn't bring it up and was told, well, it's not a public way, it's, there's nothing we can do anyway, so, but I don't know why it wasn't on the city's purview for review. Uh, maybe it was up to spec, but something happened, I don't have a clue, but, um, I'm not voting for this tonight. I, I would request that we get a, something back from the engineering department within the next few weeks on what they seem to have, what, what they found with the issues raised, the, the sidewalk, the flooding. Um, and, and then we can make a more informed decision of how we wish to go forward. If we legally have no choice but to do this ourselves, then I will accept it as a public way reluctantly. And request that it be made a priority because th, th, this, this is not the fault of the residents in that area. This is not something that the city did. Or there's like groundwater issues, maybe there is, I don't know, but let's get the analysis done and then we can make a more informed decision. So for right now, I'm not gonna accept this. Thank you.
Uh, I see a motion from Counselor Green. I do have three other counselors to speak first. Uh, unless that is a motion to, well, no, we don't have a motion on the table, so we can't move the question. Uh, so Counselor Schultz.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with, uh, city solicitor Pusatary and Counselor Dina Tally that, uh, we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't, uh, make this a public way tonight. I'm, I'm, actually, I was gonna make a motion, I don't know if Counselor Green's motion was, but my motion was to, uh, continue the public hearing till we get more information on this, as, uh, Counselor Dina Tally has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Van Hasenga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, if you don't mind, I just would like to ask Mr. Erickson whether or not the city holds a, any remaining, uh, performance bond for this project.
Mr. Erickson, go ahead.
I am not aware of anything that we're holding at the ti, at, at the current moment. I'll have to look into it. Um, I'll have to check with, uh, Mike O'Hara in the, the planning department.
Okay, thank you. Um, so in terms of how to make this work, typically the city holds a performance bond for the completion of these streets, which is then released over time as the project is completed. If the performance bond is completely released, the city does not have much leverage. Uh, we can refuse to accept it as a city street, but it only will hurt the residents who live there. Because they will lose, uh, maintenance or possibly city services if we decide to stop plowing or picking up trash. Um, so we're, we're in a bit of a hard part here, uh, or a hard position here. Um, so I think it is worthwhile to maybe put this on hold for a little bit and do some review, especially if, um, our current, uh, assistant engineer hasn't had an, an opportunity to review whether or not the conditions of the special permit have been completely satisfactory. Maybe it's, we should take some time to do that and see what the situation is as of now. Not necessarily when the roads are completed, because this is, we're accepting them now. But even if there are issues with flooding, um, or other things, we may not have much recourse to force the developer to, to complete them if we no longer hold a bond. Thank you.
Thank you, uh. I would, I see that, uh, Counselor Hughes has withdrawn his request to speak. So I will note that in our position as stewards of taxpayers' money, I do think that we should uh, fully investigate whether there is any recourse, uh, for the city against any other responsible party before we take on this responsibility ourselves. However, if there is no recourse, it certainly should fall on the city rather than on the innocent residents. Um, so I would also support continuance. Uh, and I have a motion on that subject from Counselor Green. Do I have a second? I have a motion and second to continue. I have a note from Counselor Gina Tally that says he is in favor. We can't count that as a vote, but I will note that for the council. Uh, he has to step out for a moment. Uh, that said, if there is no objection, we will continue this by unanimous consent. Uh, I would ask that we make this, I would ask that we take this as a motion to continue indefinitely until such time as the engineering department can confirm for us the facts that we are looking for.
Do we have to close the hearing first?
Uh, for a continuance, I don't believe that we do. Uh, Solicitor Pusatary, I see you've unmuted yourself. Do you have something to weigh in here?
Uh, just to answer the council's question, no, we would, um, we would wanna keep the hearing open and continue it. Um, otherwise I would be concerned, we might have to re-notice it. Um, what I would suggest also, um, Counselor is, um, I'm thankful that, uh, Counselor Walsh has offered her phone number. If the constituents are still hearing us, um, if they can make sure that we get a complete list, I have an email drafted to the developer at this point in time. I'd like to get as much of a complete list as possible. Uh, so that we can contact the developer. And maybe Counselor Walsh and I can just touch base tomorrow. Thank you.
That's fine, uh, Mr. Pusatary.
So I have a
To, uh, unanimous consent?
I'm sorry?
I object to unanimous consent.
Okay. Uh, in that case, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I, I can't see if, uh, Counselor Dina Tally is back yet.
He does not appear to be.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Uh, so Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
No.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boshman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming. You're muted?
I was, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, uh, nine to one with Counselor Dina Tally abstaining, but mentioning his in favor of it.
All right, thank you very much. Motion passes. The hearing is continued until such time as we have received the necessary information. Uh, moving on, we have a continued public hearing on, uh, actually, I should note, because we have not concluded that hearing, uh, if there is no objection, I am going to skip over zero twenty-five twenty-one, which would have been the vote to, uh, order the matter that has not yet been decided.
Should we lay it on the table?
Uh, I believe it's simply not ripe for decision at the moment. Uh, but we certainly could make a motion. I would take that as a motion to postpone indefinitely. Uh, I have a motion and second to postpone indefinitely.
Motion? So, okay.
And if there is no objection, we will do that by unanimous consent. Seeing none. Uh, moving on, we have the continued public hearing zero twenty-nine twenty. Uh, Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance. This is bundle three of phase two. Uh, this is the final bundle. So, once we conclude this, it will go to drafting of the ordinance. I, uh, I'm not gonna declare the hearing open because it's already open, but we are resuming the hearing. Uh, Mr. Skroski, before I ask you to continue, I am going to uh, take public comment. I have two people signed up for public comment on this subject. I believe two. We have Mr. Roskella, are you still with us? Mr. Anthony Roskella?
I am here, can you hear me, President Zarella?
Again, uh, someone needs to mute themselves because we're getting feedback, but I can hear you.
That may have been me. Can you hear me now? Cause I was on both the computer and the phone.
Yes, uh, let me see if I can see who's echoing here. Uh, yeah, anyway, you can continue, it's not that bad. Did we lose you?
No, I'm here.
Okay, excellent.
Would you, uh, um, are you asking for my comments now or are you gonna go through the changes? I was
One device.
That might help. Uh, is there, is there one of your devices that you can hit mute on?
I, I tried that. And I, I'm getting the echo on my end as well.
Okay, maybe, well, uh, continue, uh, we can deal with it as best we can. Maybe if you move yourself slightly further from your uh, speakers, I'm not sure.
Um, perhaps if I hang the phone up, since I'm on the computer, it should be able to pick me up on the computer audio.
That might work, yes.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Excellent, go ahead.
Okay, I, um, I don't hear an echo, but I, I don't hear you either, so I don't know if that's because I'm speaking or anyways, I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, my comments were, uh, we, we received, um, Acadia, I'm with Acadia Healthcare and we, um, represent Havet Opco. And we recently received a zoning letter, uh, approval letter as the zoning is now for a CBD property located at three seventy Lunenburg Street to relocate our, our facility. But that was contingent on any of the zoning changes that may have been done to what was considered business and, uh, professional office in the past and how medical, uh, use would fit into that. In addition to the letter stating that the, the actual zone of the, of the parcel itself may be changing from the, from a CBD to something different. And so, uh, I am attending, uh, your meeting just to find out what those changes might be and how it might impact a, um, a potential lease we're, we're prepared to sign. Uh, with our neighbors there, the UMass Medical, um, Center, that's, uh, would be the other half of the building. It would be just us, uh, the two of us and they are um, welcoming our use, uh, in the, uh, in that parcel, in that building on that parcel for us to, uh, relocate our, our business. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, uh, if you still, well, if you still can't hear me, you can't hear me, obviously. I'm hoping you'll turn your phone back on if you can't hear me now that you're not speaking. Uh, but I believe, unless I'm greatly mistaken, that if you've already received a permit or a zoning termination for that use, you will fall under the grandfathering provision of our zoning code, so your use should not be imperiled by any of these changes. Uh, uh, Solicitor Pusatary has a comment on that subject.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there is, um, a little caveat to the position that you have here, which would be, uh, he, his grandfather, uh, would, would not be in effect. Uh, or the relation back would not be in effect uh, until sometime, um, prior to the notice of the first hearing, which has been interpreted in the past to be the first hearing of a planning board. So many of these zoning changes have gone to your planning board. There's been a notification to the entire city of changes in our zoning and puts many of us, uh, in trying to interpret the zoning code to current intended uses somewhat in a, a question to exactly how that will be. And I know that medical uses has been a, a long-term carried uh, issue that's been for this board in the past and has been rolled into a, a bundle. Uh, one of the bundles anyways, uh, through the planning department. So, um, unfortunately, it is not that clear. So, um, unfortunately, it is not that clear. Uh, until we get a final determination from your council and the final ordinance. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, that is correct. I believe we did, uh, discuss a change to the ordinance. Uh, to the proposed ordinance. To make it clear that in this instance, we would track any. Changes only from the date of enactment, uh. But I'm not certain how that was actualized or if the council has voted on that provision yet. That will be kept in mind, uh, by myself anyway, and I trust by my colleagues, uh. As we go forward and as we eventually approve the final ordinance. Because I think I can speak for my colleagues when I say none of us intend to. Uh, spring any surprises on any, uh, developers or. Businesses in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much. I can hear you now. And, um, do you have an idea of when that, a timeframe of when that might be, uh, finalized?
I am not certain if that provision was in the bundle we're considering tonight. I don't believe that it was, but the ordinance itself. Will be covered, uh, will not actually be finalized for at least another few meetings. Uh, Mister Skroski, did you want to comment on that?
Um, yes, if I, if I could. So, the, the use in question, um, would be designated under the. The new zoning that we are voting on this evening as a medical treatment center, facility or clinic. Um, and that use would be allowable by a special permit from the Board of Appeals in the Commercial District. The Industrial District and the Medical Services District. Um, so that's one item, um, to note for that use that. Tonight's vote would affect the other, as you alluded to. That site on Lunenburg Street is currently zoned CBD. But with our map changes this evening, we are basically taking. Our eight districts that were all zoned CBD and reclassifying them. So the downtown district will become really the lone. Uh, CBD district and all the other districts will be classified accordingly. Uh, the one in question, uh, with the property on Lunenburg Street, it would be classified as commercial. Under the ordinance as proposed for the vote this evening. So essentially, so to answer your question, if all the votes would go into place tonight as proposed. Your project would be eligible for a special permit from the Board of Appeals. And if provided the, the hearing closed tonight and the. Ordinance went to its readings on April sixth and April twentieth, the ordinance would go into effect on April twentieth, twenty-first.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll look online on terms of the special permit for the BZA hearing and what processes are involved in that then.
Thank you. And Mister Ruskella, uh, I will note if you'd like to contact me on that subject. Uh, I would be happy to help navigate that. I have sat on the zoning board for about six years now. I'm sorry, five years, uh, so. I can certainly point you in the right direction on that.
Thank you, President Sorella. I appreciate that.
All right, uh, we also had at least one other person who was seeking to speak on this matter. I'm sorry, look, I'm just reviewing the submissions. I believe the other in question. Uh, I see councillor Fleming is looking to speak. I also have at least one other councillor, I believe, who. No, I'm sorry, it's just councillor Fleming. I will, uh. Get to councillor Fleming in just a moment. This is, ah, yes, uh, Mister Eric Lottie. Had registered to speak, was unable to log in successfully. He is overseas. He did email the city clerk. Uh, to note that he is a thirty-year resident of the city. Uh, living in the rural residential area. Uh, zone and is in favor of the zoning change to include commercial recreation in the rural residential. As he is looking to develop two hundred and fifty acres for family outdoor recreation and camping. Uh, he does not give his street address, I don't believe, in the emails. But that is, but we will get that for the record. That said, uh, councillor Fleming, uh, oh, has withdrawn her request to speak. Uh, okay, so Mister Skroski, if you would like to proceed with your presentation. You may go ahead.
Sounds good. Um, good evening councillors, um, here tonight, as you all know, to talk through. Hopefully the last round of our zoning changes and I'm going to briefly go through this. This isn't our first rodeo. Um, but it's, you know, we've been doing this for over a year. Uh, twenty-member advisory committee, a twelve-member working group, a two-phase process, phase one. Just more administrative in nature was approved in August. Phase two is where we are today. It's been, um, three public hearings, one public hearing continued over the process. Um, and covering map changes, major use and dimensional changes and. Um, you know, we can get into that here. So as an overview, we've wrapped up bundle one and bundle two. This evening will be taken on bundle three, which includes signage, multifamily development. Earth removal, the adaptive industrial district, the commercial recreation district. Site plan review responsibilities of the planning board. The dimensional table, the use table, map changes, and finally the deletion of overlays. Um, as I just stated before, provided we close the hearing this evening. Uh, the work would then be on myself, our city solicitor. And the team at BSC to take these changes and turn them into a formal ordinance. Um, you know, consolidating formatting and consistency fixes, then presenting it to the council. Hopefully for the April sixth first reading and then the April twentieth second final reading. So that's sort of the path ahead here. Um, and now to get to bundle three, I'm going to go through each item. That's part of this bundle. What I'm going to note is if there are any reconciliation items, in other words. Um, where the vote between the Economic Development Committee and the Legislative Affairs Committee differed. Um, and then at that point, you know, I'll pause to, I, I guess reconcile those items. I think the other thing I'll call out in each of these areas are follow-up items. Um, so within the various committees, there were a few items where the committee had instructed the Community Development and Planning Department. To conduct some further investigation on, um, and you know, whether coming up with a new definition. Or, um, you know, reformatting a certain item in the ordinance and, and so there's some follow-up items as well that we'll know. Um, but starting with the multifamily development piece, uh, this creates design guidelines and standards for multifamily development. Which is defined as four or more dwelling units. Um, it also allows a planning board waiver for density and setback requirements. Um, this previously needed a variance from the CBA. Uh, for projects of nine or more units. Um, and I'll stop there. There were no reconciliation items, no follow-up items. Um, so both committees agreed with the decision here.
Thank you, uh. That said, this portion of the proposal is for the council.
Move to approve.
Okay.
I have a motion and seconds to express approval of the council, uh. As to this portion of the rec, of the, uh, proposal. Speaking on the motion. If there is no objection. Then it's the sense of the council that it should be done.
On to signage, um, this section tweaked the signage regulations. It explicitly laid out the permit requirements for applicant. Um, and enforcement capabilities of the building commissioner. This section had a few items, uh, for reconciliation, one minor item. Related to historical plaques, one item related to pennant signs, and then a follow-up item related to exempting lawn signs from. Uh, from needing a permit essentially, and I'd be happy to go into each of these items. Right now. And hopefully you all had seen in the document, I had highlighted each of the reconciliation items. So you can scroll right down to them in your materials. The first one here, uh, one eight one dot five three three seven historical markers decorative plant, uh, plaques. This was a vote that the Economic Development Committee voted to include it. Within the signage ordinance, the Legislative Affairs just proposed a tweak to move it from five, uh, one eighty-one, five three three one. Which is right here, um, to take that item and separate it and add it as its own item. Related to, uh, signage that is exempt from needing a permit. And, um, council president, do you want me to go through each reconciliation item? And.
Let's, let's take each reconciliation item separately and then we'll take the sign amendment.
Okay.
Uh, I have on this item councillor Van Hazinga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just will, um, just did want to report that, um. This change, uh, suggested by the Legislative Affairs Committee did not appear to, um, go against any of the sentiment in the Economic Development Committee. This more seems to be a, a fine tuning, but I encourage any other members of the committee if they oppose to speak up.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and seconds, uh, to approve this change. If there is no objection, and again, I remind you, I can't see all councillors at the moment, so any objections must be entered in the chat box. If there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done.
The next item, um, was a reconciliation, I, or I, I guess, uh. Economic Development Committee. Uh, voted to authorize BSC and the Community Development and Planning Department to add a definition for lawn signs. There was a concern that lawn signs, what, what you might see for an election or maybe enrollment for your, your kid's school. That those would need a permit under this new amendment. Um, so this was added to the section, signs not requiring a permit. And lays out essentially, you know, what types of signs might be exempt. From needing a permit with regard to lawn signs. So, um, they can remain in place, um, for, um. You know. No more than ninety days, an area greater than six square, or no greater than six square feet. And then it lists out the types of lawn signs that this shall include.
I'd like to ask, uh, Solicitor Pusitieri if he's had a chance to look over this for Gilbert compliance. Mister Solicitor, do we still have you with us? Uh, it appears we do not. Okay then, uh, I will assume that will get picked up in the ordinance review before we get a final ordinance draft then.
Uh, I'll flag that accordingly.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, do we have, do we want to consider any limit on total number of such lawn signs? Uh, because you know there'll always be one person who decides to cover their lawn in. Political signs or something, uh, or any other kind of signs. But it does seem like it's not likely to be common.
Move to approve this, uh, um, adjustment reconciliation item.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve as listed. If there is no objection. Seeing none, it is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Okay, the last item related to signage was. One eighty-one, five three, five, five. Section D size and quantity. Um, and this item was originally proposed as an amendment in the Economic Development Committee. Then was, uh, voted down and then. Subsequently reworded slightly in the Legislative Affairs Committee. Um, and I'll read it here, no more than one pennant banner or feather flag may, may be displayed at any one time or facing any one fifty-foot length. Or less of street frontage abiding the parcel of land on which the establishment is located.
Thank you, and, uh, just to know, oh, I see Solicitor Pusitieri is back. I'll get to you in just one moment. Uh, on this item. The intent was simply to clean up the existing draft and make it clear exactly what was allowed and what was prohibited. Uh, the original version rejected by the Economic Development Committee. Uh, was rejected on the basis of a typographical error that I made when drafting it, which left out some critical words. Uh, I believe, though I don't want to speak for a committee that I'm not on. I believe that during the Legislative Affairs Committee. The concerns raised by economic development were addressed, uh, but I encourage any member of that committee. To speak up if that is not the case. All right, uh, I see councillor Boishman, uh, would first like to check in with Solicitor Pusitieri. Uh, did you have a comment on this item or is this in response to the previous item?
Are you talking to me?
Uh, no, Solicitor Pusitieri.
Uh, councillor Sorella, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize. I disconnected for a moment there and I just reconnected and I was brought to my attention that you were looking for me. So, uh, if there is a specific issue, I'm available. I, I just wanted to let you know that.
I had just wanted to ask if you had had a chance to review the draft new language for lawn signs, uh, for Gilbert compliance?
I, I have not reviewed, uh, anything in connection with lawn signs. Uh, in fact, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't aware that there was a specific request to do that, if I had missed that from our last meeting.
No, I apologize. There wasn't a specific request. I was just curious if you had had a chance to look at it. Um, but I, as I said, when we weren't sure if you were, uh, going to be returning, I, I'm sure that will get picked up in the ordinance drafting anyway.
I'll make a note of it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Boishman.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand it, because this ain't my critique here on zoning. Uh, we choose, uh, on South Street, we choose Kmart or across the street. Uh, you get about, across the street, you got eight different businesses across the street. And, uh, are you telling me they can, you know, be able to put up eight different pending signs up? Oh, no.
Given that I believe the lot you're thinking of is a single parcel.
Right.
Uh, they would not be able to. They would be able to put up no more than one pennant banner or pennant or a feather flag. For every fifty feet of road frontage that they have. Uh, in fact, the intent of this was specifically. To allow for multiple signs in instances where there are multiple businesses on separate parcels. But not to allow one business or strip mall or something to have just a string of. Pennants or whatever, because everyone knows that looks ugly.
Okay, and if you don't mind, Mister Chair, I got one other question, but it has, it may have to go back to the other place. I'm just going to ask some quick question, maybe Tom can, because I didn't know we were going to bring this, think about it. I, I think I asked Tom this question before, on the historicals downtown and coming into signs. Uh, we choose the, uh, you, you got the hurt downtown Pittsburgh down by Moran Square area. It's called a historical area. Why would we allow CBS to put, wasn't my thing, but why did we allow CBS to put up a sign? In a historical area?
So, that's a good question, and there's sort of an important distinction between. Locally designated historic districts and districts that are designated historic, um, in the federal registry. There, they kind of have two separate purposes. Um, so when. A district such as the Moran Square District is designated historic by the National Registry, it makes it, um, available for. Individual buildings to be eligible for state and federal tax credits related to redevelopment of a property for economic development uses. So essentially up to forty percent of the qualified rehab expenditures can be. Received in a tax credit if it's done in a historic way. A local historic district, and the only one we actually have that's a local district would be the Monument Square District. Is, uh, the type of district where. Any sort of aesthetic changes made within the district need to have a special level of board approval. Um, so in, in our case, the Historical Commission. Um, reviews any important changes taking place in the Monument Square District. But that's the only one that's a local district that governs sort of local decision-making such as signage or, or things like that. The other one is more thought, best thought of as an incentive than a restrictive tool.
All right, okay, I didn't, okay, thank you. It's fine. I wanted to know.
Thank you, uh, councillor Schultz.
You're muted councillor.
Sorry, I'm muted. Uh, sorry about that. Uh, I was looking, you know, we, we, we're talking the previous, uh. Sorry, I'm muted. Uh sorry about that. Uh I was looking, you know, we we're talking the previous uh. Approval that we uh had ninety days for a lawn sign. And you know, we've got this duration period and we've just changed it. Uh you know, we've got temporary means not exceeding two consecutive months and then we're. Then we're allowing the building commissioner uh two months more, and then we're saying no temporary sign may be displayed longer than five months with. I don't, should we be putting uh like in the previous change that we made that that it be ninety days? Maybe we should just leave, leave the duration to cover all the durations for for temporary signs that. I mean, I I don't know, it seems like it's kind of confusing to have so many different references to duration in our. In our uh. Our changes here.
So Counselor, uh the. Temporary sign designation that we're currently looking at on screen and the lawn sign section that we were previously looking at. Are designed to cover two diff- two completely different use cases. Uh one would be, you know, people putting signs in their actual front lawns and residential districts. The other would be temporary, primarily commercial signs. We're not defining it that way, but that's primarily what we're aiming at is.
I guess that's my point, should we be defining it that way so people know know the distinction? I don't know, it's just something that, you know. Might be a good idea.
I think the complication there is that we do have. Uh some provision in this sign ordinance that allows for. Signs of a non-lawn sign type in residential districts under sharply limited conditions. And we want to make sure they play by the same rules as the commercial signs in commercial districts. So, it's. It's something that's not au- not automatically going to be clear. But then again, the typical resident who's going to put out a lawn sign probably isn't going to check the zoning code first anyway.
Yeah, and who's going to enforce it, right? Who's going to enforce all these lawn signs, you know?
Right, it's it's only, exactly, it's only going to be enforced if someone complains, so. Uh but that that said, if anyone has an amendment they would like to offer, obviously, that's always a possibility. Mister Skroski?
I'm not in a place to offer an amendment, but I. Wh- when Counselor Schultz had had brought up the item of time limits, you know, I thought a bit about. The lawn sign limit of ninety days, three months basically. Um and I'm thinking of certain lawn signs that one might put out. Particularly leading up to important November dates um that. Might start in March, right? It might start in February. Um I just wanted to pose that as a. As a, that's longer than three months and many people have lawn signs on their lawn for longer than that period. Um it, Counselor Schultz, when you brought that up, it just struck me that, you know what, these. Figures that we attach are somewhat arbitrary, um and and it's. It's a consideration I think the council should make on that date, that was a new addition by BSC in my team, but um when I'm.
I didn't think that ninety days was long enough, Tom, really, when I saw that, and then I said, well, maybe, you know, it'll be five months, you know, it might be. You know, that'll be, that'll cover it, but yeah, I I really don't think ninety days is long enough for for the lawn signs.
Uh is that, is that all, uh Counselor Schultz?
That's it. Thank you, Counselor Zarella.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Squallia.
Um yes, I I didn't, um I missed the um limit on lawn signs um for on. People's property um for political lawn signs. I think that's uh. Going to get us into trouble. I I appreciated in the last zoning. Uh ordinance in our current zoning ordinance where it says uh something like. There will be no regulation on political signs on private property. I I think that's that's approximately the wording. And I feel like if the city were to, you know, if we were to try to put this in an ordinance uh that we're regulating political signs. It would be um utilized by political opponents to, you know, use. I don't know, whatever city ordinance to try to, you know, remove lawn signs from their opponents or whatever, it would just. It just sounds like a big trouble and I'm I'm completely against, you know. Any kind of um limits on political signs on private property, uh you know, I I. I think that that would just get us into trouble and I would really like to see uh that removed or in some. Some verbiage like we have currently that says something like, uh you know, political signs will not be. Um limited or whatever, whatever it says now, I think we should keep that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh so I suspect Counselor Kucher is about to say what I was about to say. Counselor Kucher.
Yes, knowing firsthand and being in a lawsuit uh right now in regards to First Amendment rights. Um us as a municipality cannot. Attempt to limit political. Any kind of political speech right now. Um it's a First Amendment right. It's a lawsuit waiting to happen. I don't think it's a good idea. And that's come from, coming from somebody who does that type of work. We're taking a huge liability by even entertaining the fact. So I would suggest we completely stop that kind of. That kind of idealism. We we you can't do that.
So that was not actually what I was going to say then. Uh-huh. I was going to say, I think we're all on the same page in terms of wanting to keep. That concept of not regulating political signs. The reason that the committees added these distinctions. And I think it's still imperfect. I'm looking to see what the final, that's why I asked uh Solicitor Priscieri about Gilbert compliance. The problem was that our current ordinance specifies political signs or unregulated. Which is a content-based regulation. It says if you have a sign that is exactly identical to a political sign, but it's not for a political candidate, we're going to regulate it differently than a political sign. Which there was recently a uh a few years back, a case called Reed v. Gilbert. That said that you can't do that, basically. Um you can't distinguish between. Signs based on the message that's contained on the sign. Uh. So this is an effort. To maintain the ability to regulate lawn signs at all and not just have people putting up whatever lawn signs they want. While still giving maximum leeway to political signs. But we need to make it content neutral in some form or fashion. Uh it is a very, very difficult line to walk and. I think this particular language will likely change form before it comes back to us. From Solicitor's office. I agree entirely, though, with both Counselor Squallia and Counselor Kucher. That regulating political signage is not desirable. We're just looking to find language that we can use that doesn't. Hinge on designating it as a political sign in the ordinance. That being said, I have Counselor Genitali.
With all due respect, uh I am not a lawyer. And the fact that it takes a lot of words to explain what was just stated. I'm almost inclined to strike this entire section. I don't even, I'm reading it right now, I don't even know why it's in here. I I heard the explanations, but. I, when when I hear the words gray line, gray area and fine line, it's like, so why are we doing this at all? I mean, what, we have had something in place for decades, which is nothing. First of all, from a enforcement perspective, this is unenforceable. This is not going to be enforced. And, you know, so if I'm a political candidate and I'm gonna drive around the city and look at other people's signs that they've got, I'm gonna. Write down the date and timestamp when they put it down and then call the, call the city if it's ninety days plus. I mean, how do you prove when the sign went out there? Uh it's it's stupid. I I'm not trying to disrespect anyone, I just. This this to me, I I understand the legalese, or maybe I don't, and that's why I don't want this in here, because. It, if it if it's that much of a painstaking process to justify this, then I don't think it should be in there at all. I'm not aware of ever ever being an issue. The issue has always been polit- political signs on public property. That's always been the issue in my fifteen years as an elected official in this city, was. Keeping it away from polling locations. And not having it on any public property, and one of the things that we don't enforce either right now. And I can't stand people who make these complaints, with all honesty, is. Everyone forgets that I think it's five feet from the road is not your property. Or or this, or the city has rights to that frontage of your house. So my front yard. It doesn't start where the pavement stops and the grass begins. Technically, the city's got five feet in. If I understand that correctly, in most cases, the city owns five feet in. And what people will do when they have political lawn signs or any signs. I'll bring a political lawn sign to a resident's house and here she'll tell me, put it right there at the curb. You know, so I I'm not gonna, not gonna embarrass him, but. Years ago before he was a counselor, Counselor Schultz, you know, he has a fence in front of his yard and I put the sign in front of the fence. Well, someone could make an argument, that's not his property because it's it's not five feet from the curb. So we don't even enforce that nonsense, if you ask me, it's nonsense. Because unless the city's gonna mow his grass and trim his hedges there, it's his property, in my opinion. So. Uh not to use him as an example, but it just came to mind, so I'm in favor of striking this whole thing. And, you know, we'll deal with it if there's an issue, but. This is private property. If people want to have a political lawn sign for me or any one of us on the council, that is three months after the election. That's his or her problem, but I've never seen that happen. If anything, they don't tell me they want it removed, they remove it themselves. Which frustrates me to know that, so, you know, so I say, get rid of it. I don't think this is necessary at all, and even if people think it is, we're not going to enforce this, let's be honest. This isn't gonna get enforced. We don't enforce rules right now, unfortunately, with the five feet rule that I just mentioned, and every issue I've ever dealt with regards to signage is when it's. It's when it's on public property, not private, so I'm in favor of striking the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor, I do just want to know if we were to strike this entirely, the effect would not be to leave it unregulated. But rather to leave it entirely unpermitted, uh so we would have to have some verbiage left in. Uh that said. I would be perfectly amenable to. Leaving it, leaving nothing but a dimensional and a slightly longer durational requirement. The intent here is not to say, here's how many, you know, here's the sign you can have, here's. How, you know, it's not even really about the duration. The issue is so that no one puts up, you know, one of those. Twenty-foot billboards on their front lawn and the neighbors have no recourse, because if we don't have a law against it, then. They can't really do much about it except a private civil suit.
But it's that, Mr. President, not to interject, but. I'm I'm back to the whole private property rights, I mean. There is recourse, I'm sure, as you just said, but I mean, I'm torn, but I I guess I'm not, because. That's not the city's problem. That's the person who has the property who wants to do that, and.
So Counselor.
Neighborhood dispute, but.
So Counselor, the issue is, like I said, if we were to strike this entirely, the effect would not be to permit everything, it would be to permit nothing. Because we have these generally applicable signage restrictions in residential districts. Now, we could, you know, someone could make a motion to amend the ordinance to just strike all. Sign regulations on private residential property, but that's not currently what we have before us. Uh and for so long as we have those other generally applicable restrictions. We need to make a carve-out if we want to allow lawn signs at all. So the question is simply, what carve-out are we making?
Well, well, I'm not in favor of any, I'm not in favor of any durations. And I'm not in favor of uh spacing. That's not up to me. Now.
There there is no spacing.
Okay, well, I see, I see on here it says um. In an area no greater than six square feet.
That's the size of the sign.
Okay, so.
It's saying you can't have, like I said, the the thirty-foot billboard or whatever.
See, even that, I'm having a difficult time with, because here's my point is, I, unless it is obstructing. A neighbor's view of of a road or they can't back out of their driveway, I mean, there's gotta be legalese on that, but. If it's not obstructing anything. And it's it's not like a, I mean. That's the only area I can see an argument, that if I'm trying to back out of my driveway and I can't see the road because there's a gigantic sign in the way. That's obviously a hazard, but um. I'm definitely not in favor of the ninety days at all, and I guess I leave it to the attorneys or or. Uh you know, Solicitor Priscieri on trying to make sense of what I'm trying to say in that. I I don't know what to do, I guess, with respect beyond the ninety days. I'm against the time limit. But in terms of trying to make it so that we don't have gigantic billboards on someone's property, well. I mean, unless it's causing a safety hazard or an obstruction, I don't even know if we're allowed to say anything about that. I mean, I could put, I could put a twenty-by-twenty sign in my front yard right now. It's not gonna obstruct anything, it's not gonna bother anybody. It may upset some people, but, oh, well, I mean, what, I so I I just feel like it's a very. Fine line we're walking into here. Unless it's a safety issue, I don't feel comfortable with it. But I certainly don't want to do a a a a timeline restriction. Because that's never gonna, that's never gonna get enforced.
So do I have a motion to amend then, or?
Well, Mr. President, what is, what is the process here? Are we gonna have it, our attorney? Look at this specific item, as you said earlier, is that the plan?
Yes, certainly. When it comes back to us in ordinance form, it may look different than this anyway. Uh but he, but he's not going to be making any substantive changes unless they're either legally necessary or unless we instruct him to do so.
I mean, I'll I'll leave it up to the rest of the council, but I mean, I'll make a motion that we strike every every bit of language in here that talks about timeframes. At a minimum.
From the entire ordinance?
From this, from this, from this section for lawn signs. There should be no time, there should be no time constraints at a minimum. Um as to what we talked about earlier about size, I. I mean, I have no idea.
Well, let's, let's take the one motion first.
A second motion.
I would second uh uh turn uh um Counselor Dean Atali's uh uh motion to. You know, get out any, any kind of um. Signage regulation, you know, on on a private, private way.
Counsel, Counselor, we have just a motion on the durational element at the moment.
Well, for the durational, I agree with, I agree with uh Counselor Dean Atali. You can't, if if somebody wants to have a sign that says, okay, Biden twenty-twenty-four. If Counselor Dean Atali wants to put up a sign in his yard that says Biden twenty-twenty-four, that's his right, he can do it. We can't, as a council, forbid it. And leave it up for the next four years. You can't do it.
So I. I would. Contest the the issue of whether we have the right to impose time, place, and manner restrictions on signage generally. Uh but at the moment, we have a motion to strike durational limits from the lawn sign. Provision of this proposed ordinance. Do I have anyone else speaking on this motion to amend?
Mister, Mister President, if I may, uh I'd like to. Yeah, I'd like to add to that, strike anything about size on anyone's private property, anything that has it. Has to do with private property, uh I don't think we should be going on anyone's private property, telling them what they can and cannot do in terms of signs. Uh I think we're trying to bring the city back in a positive way and we're going in the right direction. The moment we start going onto people's property, telling them what they can can't can't have and cannot have, I think they're just gonna. Put us back out in a a a negative way, and we're doing so much to dig ourselves out of, out of the hole that we in in terms of. In terms of the way uh we see ourselves and the way people who are moving in see us, I just don't think that we 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 need that, I don't know. Uh so I I I join Counsel Dean Atali and striking all that and but adding any type of. You know, the s- six square feet or two or three, whatever, like, you know, I'd avoid that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So Counselor, uh it is in order to make a motion to amend, a motion to amend. But in the interest of avoiding nested order, nested motions of that sort, uh may I request that we. may I request that we take the remainder of your addition after we address the durational element? Councillor Hughes?
I'm sorry?
Is it all right with you if we take the, take your addition separately after we address the durational element?
Yes.
Thank you. I have councillor Schultz.
Yeah, I know I'm dating myself, but when I, when I first ran for office in Pittsburgh forty-three years ago, you couldn't have lawn signs at all, the city enforced lawn signs and they'd pull them out of the lawns forty-three years ago. So we've come a long way to, to allow those signs and I think, I think I agree with councillor Dean Atalley, councillor Squallier and everyone else that maybe, maybe putting limits on on lawn signs at all may be not the way to go. It didn't work before and it probably won't work again.
All right, thank you. I have councillor, let me just make sure I'm not skipping anyone. I have councillor Dean Atalley on the motion.
Yeah, the, so, so the reason why I'm only focused on the timeline is because there clearly needs to be some legal review on the other part of this in terms of the size in my opinion. Because I do see that there is an argument to be made if it's obstructing, if it is obstructing someone's ability for, for, you know, to be, to be, if it's obstructing someone's view and causing a safety hazard. You know, other than that, I'm against any restrictions on that, but that's why I didn't put it in this motion. I'd like to see what the language would be, and that would be my preference, to focus on obstruction of view and causing a safety issue. But other than that, no limitation. But that's why I'm not motioning for that, I wanna wait to see what the attorney comes up with and then we can have that battle on that. When the ordinance comes out, we can focus on that at that time.
Okay, thank you. So currently I have a motion which strikes durational limitations from one eighty-one point five three three eight, the proposed lawn sign provision. Anyone else speaking on this motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, of course. Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squallia?
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar?
Yes.
Councillor Dean Atalley?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green? Councillor Green?
We appear to have lost councillor Green, I don't see her in the attendees list.
Sorry, councillor Hughes?
Yes.
Okay, so that is unanimous.
All right, I now have a motion from councillor Hughes to strike, is this all restrictions on lawn signs or all restrictions on any signs on private property?
Lawn signs.
Okay, a motion to strike all restrictions on lawn signs, which I will note will actually be a motion to draft a blanket exemption for lawn signs. Which will be handled by the solicitor.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and second to extend the exemption for lawn signs to all lawn signs. On the motion, I have councillor Dean Atalley.
But just so I'm clear, if we do this, we're still going to receive some written suggestions from the attorney on what I discussed earlier with respect to obstruction?
That would be up to the moving councillor, councillor Hughes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So this would include language restricting lawn signs which cause any obstruction and hazard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this motion?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead councillor.
So, removing all restrictions for all lawn signs for all residential properties, is that where we are in this ordinance, residential? A, B, C, R?
I don't believe we currently have it limited by district, I believe we had it limited to correct me if I'm wrong councillor Hughes, I believe this was initially intended to apply to all private residential properties.
Right, right.
Private residential properties to remove all restrictions on lawn signs with, with language that notes signs may be restricted per the city if there is a hazard in some way, something like that.
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
I have councillor Fleming.
So, with, we're talking residential private property, how does this relate if it's a privately owned business with a political sign? Or a lawn sign?
Yeah, non-resident, non-residential property, it's still private property no matter how you wanna look at it.
Okay, all right, just wanna make sure that it falls into, especially with with the political signs.
Right, so again, the difficulty is we can't expressly say political signs are outside, so I take it that there is not a desire by the council to eliminate all signage restrictions on private property, that would be a much larger change, which we should probably debate separately if anyone wishes to move for that. Currently, this is private residential property. Speaking for the second time on this motion, councillor Dean Atalley.
So where are we dealing with commercial property? Private property with respect to lawn signs?
We will have to address that in a separate motion.
Is that part of this section or is that, that a separate section?
I would have to review. I, we currently have a motion, so I can't go to Mr. Skrowski, but as soon as we deal with this motion, I'll ask him if he has that ready to hand because I would have to search the ordinance again.
So, okay, private residential property on this one, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion and second for, to extend the exemption for all lawn signs on private residential property other than those which create an obstruction or hazard. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squallia?
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazenga?
No.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
President Sorella?
No.
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar?
Yes.
Councillor Dean Atalley?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green? Is she back?
I do not see her.
I think she's having a medical emergency.
Oh boy. Councillor Hughes?
Yes.
Okay, so that is eight in favor, two against.
All right, motion passes. It is the sense of the council that it should be done. I have councillor Squallia, what is this in relation to?
It's also on signage, but it's in relation to kind of the private property side?
Okay, if, I, I think we were next going to try to look at what we're doing with commercial signs. Does this pertain directly to that or should we hold it for later?
It's more in the political, I mean, you know, the political signage, we're now allowing it without regulation on residential property. But we have, but, you know, we're, for, for business or any other property, there, I assume that there will be limitations, correct?
At the moment, we do not have an express carve-out for that, I don't believe. It does look like the lawn signs provision applies to signs which meet its definitions in any district as currently worded. Mr. Skrowski, did you have something to add on that subject?
That was my clarification, that lawn signs applies across the board.
To businesses as well?
Correct. It's about the sign, not the use, a sign in one's lawn, and it could be any of those items.
Because in the clarification specifically for the motion, it was clarified that this was for residential properties.
I tried to correct the, the record and speak there, and I figured I just until the motion was voted on, I didn't think I had a chance to speak, so I'm speaking now.
Yes, I apologize, that is occasionally a bothersome technicality, but that said, if we would like to entertain a motion to simply rectify that, that would be in order.
Motion to apply previous motion to apply verbiage to also pertain to private commercial properties, for private, non-resident, is it commercial, industrial, do I have to say commercial, industrial, or?
I think we can simply say to all zones and uses.
To all zones and uses.
Unless otherwise specified.
Unless otherwise specified.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, councillor Squallia?
Yes, our, our current zoning says political signs on private property shall not be regulated. So I would, I would ask that we amend the motion to just say political signs on private property should not be regulated. Otherwise, we're affecting all of the other sign regulations that we've already discussed.
So councillor, again, we cannot single out signs based on their content, this is a Supreme Court decision.
I mean, we don't define the word political in our zoning ordinance and it feels like with the Reed versus Gilbert, Gilbert, the town of Gilbert tried to limit the duration of political signs and it also tried to define what a political sign is, but we are not doing that here, so I feel like...
The issue councillor was the fact that it was content-based. So if we were to say political signs are unregulated, then someone who wants to put a sign on their lawn that is the same size and font as a political sign but advertises hot dogs would be able to say you're restricting my sign because its content is non-political and that's a violation. So, we can't, if we put in language that defines it according to the message of the sign, even if we don't define the term political, we're going to get ourselves into trouble.
Don't we do that with for sale, home for sale signs? And I mean, in our current, in this current proposal, we have home for sale signs are, kind of have different regulations, so isn't that content-based?
Commercially, yes, the commercial speech plays by different rules. So perhaps the sale of hot dogs was not a great example on my part, but you could substitute you know, a whatever, a religious message, a personal message, anything that is non-political. And we can say that's fine, I'm not saying we wanna restrict that, I'm saying if we say political signs are exempt, we are implicitly restricting non-political signs by different rules. That's why we're in this whole issue with verbiage here. So the current motion is simply to extend the exemption that we just asked to be crafted to apply to all all private property regardless of use or district. This still at the moment includes a dimensional requirement. It also includes some use elements which will need to be reviewed. But that is the motion that we have before us at the moment.
I thought we, I thought we removed the dimensional requirement in councillor Hughes' motion. Remove all, he said, what was the motion to remove?
That, no, you're, you are correct, you are correct. I was not reading the notes correctly. So this, and this is why we try not to draft these provisions in council because frankly, we get into these issues where we know what we want to do, but figuring out the language to actually do it is not always clear. Because as, as you say councillor Squallia, we do not want to simply remove all sign restrictions everywhere on everything. So honestly, I do not know how to address that. I know we can suggest it to the solicitor and ask him to draft language. But unless we want, I, I would ask that we clarify. Councillor Hughes applied his statement specifically to lawn signs, which I take it was meant to be a substantive restriction, not necessarily any sign that is on private property in any place for any purpose.
He used the word residential that we, we all...
Right, but he used the word lawn signs as well. Councillor Hughes, could you confirm for me, did you intend to make your motion to eliminate all residential sign restrictions or lawn sign restrictions specifically?
Well, I was kinda speaking to the dimensions that you gave, you know what I mean, whether it's a, you know what I'm saying? So not, not necessarily lawn signs per se, but I guess it will be all signs, because typically, you know, people usually hang those big huge banners like from their roof there and hang down in front of the house, something like that, you know? That wouldn't, that wouldn't obstruct anyone, you know, if, if it was hanging from the house. You know what I'm saying?
Certainly. I have councillor Dean Atalley.
I thought that we were discussing only the section that's in yellow.
That was what I thought as well.
So, the section in yellow pertains to lawn signs specifically. And the first motion that I made was to get rid of the duration requirement. The second motion by councillor Hughes was to get rid of the dimensional requirement with a stipulation that the attorney will draft something that says, well, in the event that it is obstructing someone's view and causing a safety hazard, that would be the only exception. But other than that, on residential private property, there's no restriction on time duration for lawn signs, no restriction on dimensions for lawn signs, as long as it doesn't pose a safety hazard, period. The next piece was we made a vote on it pertaining to just residential areas. And, and, and my motion now is to pertain it to all private properties regardless of if they're residential or not, specifically for lawn signs with respect to dimensional requirements and duration requirements, as long as they don't pose a safety hazard. So we did all that in the last two votes for private property for residential. This would just extend what we just did to all other properties with specific purpose for lawn signs in this section. That's how I understand it. We're talking about lawn signs, we covered the private property for residential, this next motion is to cover everything else because I don't think we wanna be discriminatory and say that a business can't do it, but a resident can.
Right, so in that case, I think we are going to need to backtrack a step because it's unclear, I, it seems that it is unclear what exactly was being voted on. Some councillors are under the impression that we were voting on removing all restrictions, others are under the impression that we were removing lawn sign restrictions.
So I was, I was under the impression that we were doing lawn signs only because of the yellow section we're looking at. I wasn't focused on anything else.
So that's where...
I won't speak for anybody else, but...
Right, so councillor, here's, here's the issue, here's the reason this is getting complicated, is because as I said, we can't simply strike this section, that would make it simple, that would ease. But if we strike this section, the effect is to not allow any lawn signs. If we want to retool this section, we have to say what we want to allow. If we want to retool this section, we have to say what we want to allow. And if we say we want to allow any signs on private property, which is what Counselor Hughes appears to wish to say, which I understand, and then we say we want to expand that to commercial, we've essentially wiped out our sign regulations altogether. And I don't think that's what you or any of the other counselors are necessarily proposing is to wipe out our sign regulations altogether.
So, so, Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do this slowly for my own benefit. So, we have sign ordinances, regulations specific to type of signs, correct? Lawn signs, lawn signs is one of them.
Yes, it is not, however, defined beyond the dimensional and durational elements that we just struck out.
So, okay, so we have regulations based on specific signs. So lawn signs being one of those types of signs.
Yes.
And so we have an issue here where either we're going to regulate or not regulate just lawn signs and all the other signs have regulations tied to it still? Or we apply this to all signs and therefore we wipe out all our regs for all signs in the city? Am I understanding that? Can we, can we do something so it just affects lawn signs?
We can if we define lawn signs somehow.
So, so my, so my my view was to only pertain to lawn signs for the duration and the dimensional aspect other than safety hazards for all properties for lawn signs only. That was my intention. It wasn't to, it wasn't to get rid of all the other signage-type signs, but if that poses a problem, okay.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do. I am going to make a ruling that the previous motion from Counselor Hughes was through no fault of Counselor Hughes, unclear as to what exactly we were voting on. And I'm going to roll that back and we'll take it again, just so that we're clear. We want to eliminate restrictions on lawn signs to request the city solicitor draft an ordinance to eliminate restrictions on lawn signs on residential properties, and then we'll take a separate vote on commercial issues.
With the safety hazard caveat.
With the safety hazard caveat, yeah. So the light, the language that we are requesting Solicitor draft will include something defining what a lawn sign is.
Yes.
So let, do I have a second on that?
I will second that.
Okay. I have a
Motion?
Speak, I'm sorry, who is that?
It's me, sir, Mr. President.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you. Counselor Van Hazinga on the motion.
Thank you. So, without the time restrictions in this section of the ordinance, it's actually very little restricted. What is principally restricted is the size of the sign, and I do not feel that is unreasonable. I think it still allows people to state their purpose, to state political opinions, to advertise a yard sale, or to celebrate the graduation of their child from high school. That's all allowed. But I think there is a reasonable limit on the size of a sign someone can have in their yard. Once we get into infinitely large banners, it presents a hazard and distraction from the neighborhood and to the a less desirable effect on the appearance of the city in the neighborhood, and I don't think this is something we should do. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we already have taken, I want to be very clear here this time around so that we can get this moving along. We already have taken a vote to strike out the durational requirements. That passed. I believe it passed unanimously. We are now taking a vote to redraft this section to define lawn signs and to make lawn signs unrestricted. That said, if there is no one else speaking on the motion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Sorella, just a point of order real fast. I believe that Counselor DiNatali did make a motion and it was seconded for the extension of the exemption. So can we roll that back first, or can we just void that? I'm not sure how to
I'll withdraw that one.
Thank you. All right, so then this is for the lawn sign.
Yes, and Madam Clerk, just to be clear, the record should reflect the last motion that was actually taken and passed was the elimination of the durational requirement. All subsequent motions were insufficiently clear and are going to be redone.
All right, thank you.
On the motion, have a clarification question?
Certainly.
We, you're saying completely unrestricted, but Counselor DiNatali expressly noted about like a reasonable a limit to something that may cause
Yes, for hazard, yes, I'm sorry, that was intended to be included in my statement of the motion. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, Counselor Schultz. Counselor Schultz, you might
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Squalia?
Hi.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Sorella?
No.
Counselor Boishman?
No.
Counselor Kuchar? Counselor Kuchar, you might be muted. Sorry, I can't see him.
Counselor Kuchar?
Sorry. Yes.
Counselor DiNatali?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
So that is, sorry.
Madam Clerk, Counselor Hughes?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Hughes, my apologies.
Yes.
Thank you. That is actually four to four.
All right, the motion does not pass.
Mr. President, four to four?
Doesn't it say what it was?
There's ten of us. I'm sorry, who else are we missing?
All right, hang on. Counselor Green is out.
Yeah, we're missing Amy.
Right, so that should be ten.
Did we get Counselor?
I apologize, one, two, three, four, five. It is five to four, my apologies, so it did pass.
So Madam Clerk, just so I know, who is the second Counselor we're missing at the moment?
And I apologize, we do have not, hang on, I'll just repeat the votes, and if somebody could tell me if I'm incorrect, please. President Sorella have you as a no, Counselor Boishman no, Counselor Kuchar yes, Counselor DiNatali yes, Counselor Fleming yes, Counselor Hughes yes, Counselor Schultz yes, Counselor Squalia yes, Counselor Van Hazinga no, Counselor Walsh no. Is that correct?
I think that's six to four, right?
That's six to four.
Yes, it is six to four, my apologies.
Okay, thank you, no, it's easy, it's gotten to be a very complicated evening. I thank you for keeping it as straight as you have. So it is six to four, motion passes. So, is there any further desire to amend this, this provision, or should we move on to the next section? There will be time to comment on the sign ordinance as a whole at the end if necessary.
I think we've beaten that horse dead enough.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Skrowski, you may move on to the next item.
That's it for signage. I, I'm glad I posed that question.
Thanks, Tom.
No problem, it was a good discussion.
All right, next section. Or actually, I'm sorry, I'd like to take a vote as to the signage, the proposed signage ordinance as a whole, if someone would please make that motion.
Do approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the signage ordinance as proposed, as amended. Are there any in opposition? All right, so with no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. And it is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Earth removal. Sets special conditions for the commercial removal of earth. It's currently allowed by special permit in certain districts, but this section provides additional parameters for this activity. There were no reconciliation items, which means both committees agreed on all changes.
Move to approval.
Second.
Again.
Second.
I have a motion and second, anyone speaking on the motion? All right, if there are no objections, it is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Alrighty, the Adaptive Industrial District replaces the mill conversion overlay. It's targeted for aging mill buildings, brownfield sites and surrounding parcels. Properties that are within the AI district will be able to either retain their industrial zoning rights or get additional flexibility through a special permit from the planning board, and there are no reconciliation items here.
This is for the council.
Approval.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second, speaking on the motion. If there is no objection, then under unanimous consent, it is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Commercial Recreation District allows for a new commercial district proposed for the parcels off of game on way. And with the planning board recommendation, the Great Wolf Lodge parcel, which currently is zoned industrial. There were no reconciliation items here.
It is for the council.
Counselor DiNatali has to speak.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Counselor. Counselor DiNatali, you have the floor.
You, is this, is this so I see the note here that it says that it's a commercial district for the currently zoned rural residential off of game on way. And with planning board recommendation only for the Great Wolf Lodge area, correct?
That recommendation, I believe, was accepted by both committees.
Right. So wearing here, I seem to recall that there was some conflicting, or there may have been some disagreement on rural residential parcels in the city that could be with planning board approval allowed for commercial recreational use. This just mentions two spots, but if this is, is this going beyond that?
Not this section, Counselor, that it's actually a confusing bit of terminology, which will be clearer in the actual ordinance itself. We have a commercial recreation district, and we have a commercial recreation use in the table of principal uses. One column, the other is a row. So the commercial recreation district is limited to only those two areas, but the commercial recreation use is permitted in a few other areas, and that will be debated when we get to the table of principal uses.
Okay, I'll reserve comment then until that point.
And you can see here in purple, and this was the original district, the planning board had suggested adding the Great Wolf.
I'm fine with those two spots, I'm okay, yep.
Move to express approval for commercial recreation.
Second.
I have a motion and second, speaking on the motion. If there is no objection, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. By the way, does, before we move on, does anyone need a brief recess? Okay, just checking in with everyone, let me know if there's any need. Moving on.
Day plan review capabilities of the planning board. This expands the planning board's set plan review capabilities to include any new three-family developments with a rehab or new construction, non-exempt container farming, timber harvesting, contractors' yards and related uses, drive-throughs, and then there's a catch-all that says basically anywhere within our zoning ordinance that states that the planning board should have set plan review capability. If it's not covered here, that's a catch-all statement to cover it, and there were no reconciliation items here, both committees agreed on all.
All right.
Express our approval.
Second.
If there is no objection, then it is the sense of the council that it should be done.
The dimensional table, this regulates the physical character of development in a district like lot size like Frontage. A lot of the changes were already pre-approved in the previous votes you'd taken in, you know, combining the RA1 and RA2, adding the CR district, and the changes to the RC, which is our densest residential district. A few additional changes were voted by the committee to add additional flexibility for the commercial districts to allow the Commercial Recreation District to share the same flexibility as the FSU district, which is to say there are exemptions for height and other items through a special permit from the planning board. And then also added was a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet for car sales, which was a follow-up on a petition submitted by Counselor Boishman a few months back that went to Public Safety and other committees. And the loan reconciliation item is 1814273 on height exceptions in the FSU and CR district. It's a pretty simple one, and I'll talk it through as I'm pulling it up here. Essentially, the all properties in the FSU district and in the CR district under the current ordinance, the way it's written, can have an exemption from height and other dimensional limits. But down here, there is a statement, 1814273, that said, notwithstanding the provisions of 181414, the planning board may permit structures with a front stepback of less than 15 feet and a height, and it originally said it was stricken by the by the Economic Development Committee. Essentially, they, they wanted a unlimited exception to height for properties in each of these districts. The Legislative Affairs Committee then had added a hundred-foot limit. So it wouldn't, and I actually, Counselor Sorella, I'll let you speak for that vote in particular. But it went from no limit to 100 feet as the height limit that you could be accepted. The normal limit for both districts is forty, 36 feet for FSU and 50 for the Commercial Recreation District.
And the reason for that is simply because in discussions with the city solicitor, we identified a concern that allowing the planning board an unlimited ability to waive the requirement would essentially amount to a variance, and there are statutory, state statutory requirements for the grant of a variance. By putting a limit on it, which is a very high limit, I think there's I think we heard that there's maybe one or two buildings in the city that are taller than that. By putting a very high limit on it, we make it clear that it is unallowable, essentially a waiver by special permit rather than a variance. And if any building did actually need 150 feet or whatever, they could still come to the zoning board for a variance. But it just is a statutory compliance issue essentially. Counselor Squalia?
Yeah, I'm, I'm against the 100-foot limit. I don't feel like it's high enough, like in our, in FSU district, we have you know, multiple buildings that are you know, kind of not skyscrapers, but they're very tall buildings. I don't know exactly 10, 10 stories, 11 stories? And if you were to build a, you know, 12-foot-high floor-to-floor building, that 100 feet would only be, you know, eight floors with, you know, an elevator shaft. You know, I feel like eight floors to require, I mean, we would, you would require a variance, and would they have to give the variance, or would, you know, I don't know. I think 100 feet is too short for FSU development area. Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor, certainly anyone is welcome to propose a different number. The only concern would be making sure that it is still a meaningful number. For example, if we said 1,000 feet, we're essentially saying no limit. And then we're back to the, we're actually letting them grant a variance problem. So, anyone who has a reasonable number they would like to propose is of course welcome to do so.
I've moved to amend to no greater than 140 feet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to increase that limit from 100 feet to 140 feet. And Counselor, may I take that as implicitly including a motion to add the limit since the Economic Development Committee had not added that, so it was a reconciliation item?
Sure.
Thank you. On that motion, I have Counselor DiNatale. Say Mr. President, that if we keep the 100-foot restriction in there, that it would still, it can still go to the ZBA for variance to go beyond that?
That is true, they would have to prove that there is some, some condition relating to the soil shape, structures or topography of the lot and not generally affecting the entire district that would cause undue hardship if we were to enforce the restriction.
I, I, on economic development, I voted to not have a restriction. Not understanding that part you mentioned about the, the the, the, the variance piece of it, so. And what, what kind of issues that may cause if we don't have any restriction, so I will I, I guess I won't support this motion, I guess I'm going to side with the Legislative Affairs Committee's recommendation and have it stay at 100 feet, I mean, if we're gonna get into the whole thing of 120, 140, 160, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I mean, who knows, so I, you know, 100 sounded fairly high as it is. Given the stuff that you mentioned, so, I mean, I'm not against, I'm against, I'm, I'm for keeping it at 100, I, I'm not for raising it if there's that exemption for a ZBA variance and for the other reasons that were stated, I think we should just keep it the way it is, the way it was proposed by Economic, by Legislative Affairs. Okay, thank you. Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, I basically was gonna ask for a visual, what buildings in the city right now can I measure what 140 feet is?
So 10 to 12 feet is roughly, and, and generally 12 feet in today's construction for a single story, so if you're talking about 100 feet, we would be roughly an eight-story building.
Okay, so do we, just a building in the city of Pittsburgh that we currently have that I can get that visual?
Right.
The Russell Towers is nine or 10 stories.
And important to note, Pittsburgh State University property is exempt from our zoning ordinance. So any properties that they own and develop within this wouldn't, this ordinance wouldn't apply to those properties.
Such as dormitories, yes.
Okay, so just, so one of the dormitories there, that would be 140 feet?
Skroski?
Yeah.
You're muted. You're muted, Tom.
I may as well not have been, I can't give you an answer on that. At, at least, I'm, I'm trying to kind of scramble as we're talking here.
City Hall, Hotel with the City Hall.
Mr. President, if you may, I, I can't say, because it's right down the house, right down the street, the Abishon Hall at the corner of Pearl and North Street, the dormitory at F- Pittsburgh State. As an example, that is 11 stories tall with an additional penthouse mechanical area. So that would be in the neighborhood.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Counselor DiNatale for the second time on this motion. I guess the reason why I'm gonna vote against this is because whether we have 100 feet or 140. I mean, if the dormitories are exempt as it is, then this would make me even reinforce the issue of having it just be 100 feet, because the only examples we can come up with are part of the university. So, and since they're exempt, just keep it at 100, I mean, it's still fairly large, almost 10 stories, if you will. And or less than eight or nine stories, and they can get a variance if they want to go higher. Then just gotta go through additional, additional channels, but 100 is the, the breakpoint, so. I, I think for us, it's either do we want to have a limit that triggers a ZBA variance, or do we want to have no limits? And if, if we agree that we should have limits, then I think 100 feet is more than reasonable, or else we're gonna get into what's 140 versus 160, 120. I mean, you either want a limit or you don't, so let's just, I just say just keep it at an even 100, thank you. All right, I have a motion and second for the 140 provision. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Hi.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Sorella?
No.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yeah.
Counselor DiNatale?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
No.
That is six to four.
Madam Clerk, Counselor Hughes?
Oh my goodness, I am so sorry. Counselor Hughes, and my apologies.
No.
I'm sorry, that, Madam Clerk, what was that?
That was five to five.
Okay, that motion fails. Make a motion to keep it at 100 feet.
Second.
I have a motion and second for 100 feet. Speaking on the motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselors, Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Hi.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor DiNatale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
And Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
I, I would like to entertain a motion on the dimensional requirements. Dimensional requirements as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and second, speaking on the motion. If there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done. And I am actually going to ask for a one to two-minute recess, please. If everyone is amenable.
Don't move.
Why don't we make it five minutes, Anthony?
Certainly, five-minute recess unless there is objection.
Thank you.
Can take place where? And the reconciliation items are A10 related to Artist Live Work and Nude Model Studios, and then D12 related to motor vehicle or and D20 related to commercial for this next item. As, as it's loading up. Oh, it, it is loaded, okay. So the first item, we, we had approved artist workspaces and artist stu-, oh, okay. Artist Live Workspace and Artist Studios were both new uses added to the use table. And there was a concern that certain adult uses might be construed as artist uses, so there was a suggestion that was voted down by Economic Development Committee, but then voted for in the Legislative Affairs Committee, that basically would take take this term nude model studio and adjust it to confirm that these type of uses would not be considered a Artist Live Workspace or an Artist Studio. And Counselor Zrel, if, if you want to clarify anything further, I'll, I'll leave it up to you.
No, basically, the idea was, as, as Tom said, to just make sure that we're not expanding the districts in which we approve adult uses. We were originally going to try to do it by adding to the definition of Artist Live Workspace. That didn't work out very well and was rejected in Economic Development. Then in Legislative Affairs, I believe it was Tom who came up with the idea of amending the definition of Nude Model Studio instead. To make it clear that it would also apply essentially to adult video recording. Which, which was the intent of this red language here. And that's, that's pretty much it, we're just want, to be blunt, we want to make sure that no one is putting porn studios in the residential B district. So with that said, I have Counselor DiNatale to speak. You are muted, Counselor.
It, it's not on this, it's on the D20.
All right, I will keep you in mind for that. Councillor Fleming was yours related to this item?
Not this item.
Okay, do I have any comment on this item? I do not.
To accept the economic development committee's recommendation.
Second. Economic development committee's recommendation.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Legislative affairs committee recommendation.
Second. I have a motion and seconds on the motion. I councillor Fleming.
So we're voting on this this specific one right now.
This language, yes, that was added by legislative.
Okay, got it.
Anyone else speaking on the motion? Seeing none. If there is no objection, we will take it by unanimous consent. Was that an objection?
Nope.
Okay, I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure. Seeing and hearing no objection, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. Do I have any comment on the? Ah remainder of the artist live work studio item. Okay, moving on. Row D twelve.
Okay, motor vehicle repair or body shop. It was changed from not being allowed in the downtown district to. Special permit by board of appeals by the economic development committee. The legislative affairs committee then switched back to change that BA to a no. So the legislative affairs proposal would be to prohibit. Motor vehicle repair body shops, any new ones. Violas is already open, for example. They would be grandfathered, but any new motor vehicle repair would not be allowed in the downtown business district.
I have councillor Squalia.
Yes, I'm against this change from legislative affairs. I think we already have multiple. Auto body shops in the downtown, so you know, and. And they seem to do fairly well. So if if there's a market for the business in the downtown. If someone gets a flat downtown, you know, are we going to make them travel outside of? You know, Main Street because we don't allow that particular business downtown. I think it should be by special permit and thank you.
Make a motion to accept the economic development committee's recommendation.
Second.
So to be clear, the economic development committee's recommendation is to allow it by special permit from the board of appeals. Yes, that is the motion and second that I have. On the motion, I'll just note briefly. That the issue with a special permit is that it is a what we call a permissive grant. In other words, it is presumed that the board ought to grant it unless there is a specific reason not to. So the thinking, I believe, certainly my thinking when I proposed it in legislative affairs was that. Looking at where the new much smaller downtown district is. It includes. A couple existing body shops, but with the exception of the extreme ends of the district. There's really nowhere where we arguably would want to permit new body shops. They would are, I believe they would be disruptive to the. Majority, the vast majority of the district. That being said, I have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the economic development committee, which is to allow. The use in the downtown district by permit of the board of appeals.
On the motion, they get a question on the motion?
Certainly councillor.
Just to be addressed to you. I want to make sure I understand this. Before I vote. Now, we have one downtown downtown already right behind on Boulder Drive.
Correct.
To answer your question now, if he turns around and gets retired, can another business open up there?
As long as the use is not either abandoned. Or discontinued for two or more years, it would maintain its grandfathered status.
So it's like an abandoned house, you have to say.
Pretty much, yes, it's the same general rule. So if the person retired and someone. Took over the business within two years or did another business under the same use category. Within two years, they would be grandfathered in. And would be permitted to continue doing that same thing.
So one other question, I want to make sure I I get it. So. I retire and it took me two years, two, two years, one month to sell my business. I you're telling me that I would have to go for a special permit?
You wouldn't be able to.
I want to be able to get do it.
Yeah, so. If it were changed to a no, you would not be able to do it at all without a variance. If it says BA, which is the recommendation of the economic development committee. Then yes, you would need a special permit. There is no proposal currently on the table, which would allow you to resume that use after two years with no.
All right, that's a tough one here. All right.
So I have a motion and second to change the. Line D twelve in the downtown business column. To a BA, which is a special permit by the zoning board of appeals. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squalia.
Hi.
Councillor Ben Hasinger.
Yes.
Councillor Walsh.
No.
President Sorella.
No.
Councillor Boishman.
Ah, yeah, yes.
Councillor Kuter.
No.
Councillor Dean Atali.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
Councillor Hughes.
No.
That is six to four.
Motion passes.
And the final item was commercial recreation. So. The economic development committee had. Had a debate as to whether or not commercial recreation should be allowed by special permit from. The planning board in the rural residential neighborhoods. This came out of our economic development strategic plan. It was one of the recommended action items. So there was a two to two vote. So the motion failed and then it reverted to what it is today in the table, which is N. Legislative affairs then proposed to change it to PB, a special permit by the planning board. And this passed legislative affairs.
Move to accept the recommendation of the legislative affairs committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of legislative affairs, which is to allow the use. By a special permit of the planning board.
Speaking on the motion.
Councillor Ben Hasinger.
I would ask that maybe we hold off on the motion if it's amenable for a moment because I believe Mrs. Skroski may. Describe another potential change in splitting this line item. So maybe we should consider the 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 full change before we we take a vote. But I'll leave it to the the guts of the motion.
A listener.
Do I have unanimous consent for withdrawal of a seconded motion? Seeing no objection, the motion is withdrawn. Mr. Skroski, if you would like to present those options that you forwarded.
Thank you. I was sleeping on that one a little bit. And I guess in speaking with councillor Fleming and Ben Hasinga over the past. Few weeks, you know, it. Became clear that there were certain types of uses that we. Would not want to see in the rural residential neighborhood. And certainly the intent of the economic development strategic plan. Was to have commercial recreation that really takes advantage of the natural environment. Of the rural neighborhoods in the city. And so. You know, sort of the compromise that was proposed here and I'll go to it in more depth. In the definitions was to separate indoor commercial recreation from outdoor commercial recreation. Essentially, both of them would be treated the same. Everywhere else on the use table, but indoor commercial recreation would not be allowed in the rural residential neighborhood. So we're not getting these huge structures, you know, that. Are also places where one could recreate. But really, the focus would be on outdoor commercial recreation. In order for that to take place, we've got to have new definitions. So. Essentially, with this compromise, what would happen? Is we would remove the existing definition of commercial recreation and in its place put indoor and outdoor commercial recreation as defined here. So the current definition of commercial recreation broadly is indoor outdoor facilities operated such as business and open to the public for facilities. As facilities for ice skating, roller skating, racket sports, bowling, horseback riding, swimming, miniature golf and outdoor and open air live theater. That's the current definition. The proposed definition. Again, it splits into two items, commercial outdoor and commercial indoor. Commercial outdoor recreation. Should I pause for everyone to read it or read the whole thing out loud? Happy to do either.
Can everyone see it clearly? First off?
I can see it. I would say to like, give me a minute to read it.
Yeah, let's let's give everyone a moment and then if if anyone still needs it written, we'll go that route.
Could you zoom out a little?
Yeah. So outdoor here, indoor here.
Question?
Go ahead councillor. Well, actually, I'm sorry. If if we are done reading, I do have some other councillors who have.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't speak first.
But if you if you throw something in the chat box, it'll help me keep track of you.
Okay.
So that I don't forget. I believe councillor Squalia is first on the list. So whenever you're done reading, you may go ahead.
Um. Um, let's see.
No rush.
The so the new proposal would be to have. Ah outdoor commerce, commercial recreation in rural residential. Allowed by special permit of the planning board, but to not allow. This definition of indoor commercial recreation in rural residential. Where where would commercial indoor recreation? Be allowed is is it business? I mean, since we added a new.
Right. So basically everywhere it is allowed today. Um, so we that would be the downtown business district. The neighborhood business district. The commercial district by planning board special permit, CR by planning board special permit. I and AI by planning board special permit and FSU by planning board special permit.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think this this distinction helps. You know, to to eliminate kind of some concern in rural residential area while still allowing Fitchburg. To to, you know, kind of capitalize on some of these things like, you know, outdoor skiing or horseback riding, two hundred fifty acres of. You know, property for horseback riding and camping. That sounds that sounds like something we, you know, we should be doing in Pittsburgh. So, you know, I I. I will vote in favor of this commercial outdoor recreation and no one commercial indoor recreation.
Councillor Fleming?
I believe councillor Dean Atali was. Before me.
Uh, no, you actually came in ahead of him.
Oh, I did.
But you can, I mean, you can go forward.
No, it was earlier on the on the chat. Well, because I might be a little long winded.
Up to you.
Okay. So. For the past two weeks. And with the help of Tom and and Andy, I've been real councillor Vanizing. I've just been really. This is this. This is a tough one for me. I have basically two very distinct areas in my ward. I have the downtown area. You know. Pot would be. Then I have wood. Five A. Um, the phone, the phone calls I get in the and B are usually things that I can take care of. I can call, you know. EPW or whoever I need to go to get those issues taken care of, the majority of them. The troubles I have in the rural residential area where. Are more more planning board type of situations. They're not things that I can take care of. For instance, I have issues where we have developments going in and. With no ending. And they they're a yearly. A yearly problem. I have one home that sits at the bottom of one of these developments that every year. She doesn't know when the blasting is going to start. And there has never been an end date to this particular project. And. It has disrupted their life. It's changed the quality of their life. I've actually sat in that room. While things were happening and you could feel the vibration. We have water issues where we have structures going on top of hills. And no place for that water to go when it rains, rolling downhill. Just so you know, I still don't know how I'm voting on this. Rural residential is defined. Is land subject to constraints imposed on land zoned rural. Land not used, not nor vacant land able to be used for commercial purposes, land that includes premises used totally for residential purposes with no park being. Rented at any time during the year in land not used for farming or quarry. Or extractive industry purposes. The benefit of living in rural residential is because it's attracted to many property owners. It's usually quite peaceful. And quiet rural properties that are just outside of urban areas are driving and growing a growing trend right now. And ownership, they're being surrounded. People love being surrounded with that open space and the natural appeal. So I have been working with economic development. Where they have come up with this new use of outdoor recreation. With this being said, I have not been able to put any kind of parameters on what can go in here other than what these uses are. I can't put a cap on how many of these. These facilities can come into a rural residential. That's the first thing. The second thing is we really can't fine tune some of these things, for instance. Skiing. We can't define what skiing is. It's pretty broad. We would have to really go in to, you know, really. Detail things to. And maybe eliminate things out of this list. Um, we have problems with right now. The traffic. With some of the areas that we have that do have have activity. If you sit at some of these people's homes, because the homes are so close to the roads, you feel the vibration of every vehicle going up and down roads. You're going to increase traffic. You're going to be taxing the roads even more. There's just so so many. Issues that I'm grappling with right now as how I'm going to to vote on this. We have. Many trees being taken down to put solar structures. Where people are losing their their view of what used to be trees and now are these solar structures. So these are the type of things that I worry about in this wording. I take it really personally because I sit with these people and, you know, some are young. Some are elderly, some have been there for generations. And. You know, I take the time to feel what they're feeling and it's. It's it's. I almost feel it's going to break my heart if I vote one way, but I don't want to stop economic development in Pittsburgh either. So I'd like to see if possible, more parameters put on this as to how many can come into rural residential. I don't know why we can't do that. We can do that with our. Marijuana use. We can do that with our. Liquor stores. I don't understand why we can't do this and say is only gonna we're only gonna allow. Two, maybe three total because. The more we put in, the more it changes rural residential to commercial recreational. And that's not what I want to see. And I don't think anybody living in these areas want to see it. If you go to towns like Ashby, Westminster, Lunenburg. They have their zone, their rural residential and look at the property values by bringing these. Centers into our area, we may be decreasing the property values and that's what I'm trying to. We may be decreasing the property values, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. Plus, keep the beauty of what is rural residential. Right now, people are coming in to buy in these areas for that open space, and I'm just afraid that. Too many of these will come in and we'll lose that, we'll lose that space, we'll lose the beauty of it. You know, it's nice to know Fitchburg is, we have a downtown area that's urban, but. If people in, in, you know, wanna leave downtown to go into a rural section, they can. You know, and I, I have confidence in the planning board right now, but I'm the queen of what if? What if we have a new planning board in two years that? You know, says, no, we just wanna, we just wanna put these everywhere. I understand there has to be a market for it. But you still, more than likely, they're gonna be. Permitted and we're gonna find nothing but this out in this area, and we're gonna lose the peacefulness of what is rural residential. That's my fear. So again, I still don't know how I'm voting on this. And. Until the vote actually happens, I will, I will make my vote because I'm taking this, this one I'm taking. I'm feeling it internally. Because it's close to my heart, because I, I deal with these people on a regular basis. And they're just seeing generations of what was going away, and we need to keep that. Need to keep that beauty here. In that open space in Fitchburg and just not fill everything up with. Buildings and, and such, so, um, I think that's probably all I have to say right now. I will yield for the next person.
Thank you councillor, uh, councillor James Holly.
So the reason why I voted against in economic development was. The game on complex came fresh into my head with this whole subject. So a few years ago, um, many of you were now on the council at this time, that was arguably the most. Contentious vote I've had to take. Where literally over a hundred people were at a meeting. Uh, in uproar over the council potentially putting an overlay district where game on is. I voted to do that, um, primarily because with the location of it right, being right next to the highway. And you had Great Wolf complimenting it, you had a huge industrial park where game on abuts. And in the council's infinite wisdom, few decades ago, by a six to five vote. Because some of us four years ago were saying, why the hell are their homes right next to an industrial park? Whose bright idea was that? And it was because the city at that time said, we don't want to expand the industrial park. So the owner said, okay, you don't want to expand the industrial park, I'm putting homes here. And that's why the homes are there. It was a stupid decision on the city's part back then. They should have expanded the industrial zone. So. I didn't want to hold up that overlay for that reason, because it was bordering an industrial district and the highway. And to me, those houses should have never have been there in the first place. But they are, but I, I, that, that was a specific case matter that I, that I really. Wrestled with and I ended up supporting it. In this ordinance change, we're opening this up to many more types of those instances. Now, I am all in favor of not allowing indoor commercial recreational in these areas. But game on, to me, is both. You've got outdoor facilities and you have indoor facilities. And looking at the definition of what a commercial outdoor recreation is as stated here. Skiing. Zip line trails, campgrounds, that's going to attract the need for a lot of parking. There's gonna have to be parking lots put in up there, there's going to be traffic, there's going to be issues, trees knocked down, all that stuff. So that doesn't give me any warm and fuzzy those definitions. I can understand. Fishing, swimming, boating. What else do I see here? Uh, uh, um. Snowshoeing, hiking, because those are things we have already where people find a spot to park, or there's a small area to park. And then they go on a trail and they go hiking and they go, you know, there's a trail up on, off of Ashburn Amhill Road. I forget the name of the place, but I, someone tell me what it is, I don't remember what it's called, but you, you park there and you go hiking. Unless I'm getting the location wrong. Yes, so. I, I'm not against allowing a space for hiking and snowshoeing and, and, and fishing and boating because. You know, that is really using the natural resources of the area. But then we get into the whole issue of, for example, accessory indoor uses such as restrooms and changing areas, snack bars, pro shops. Clubhouses. That, that's, that's a lot of development, that's a lot of structure. So, I, I don't like this definition of, of what outdoor recreation is. Beyond fishing, boating, snowshoeing and hiking, I don't like anything else on this list. Because that is going to drive a huge need for parking and for traffic. And what is torn, tearing me up on this like councillor Fleming is, I don't want to be looked at as if I'm trying to hold back economic development. Everyone who knows my track record, that's not what I'm intended for. But I remember how game, game on went, and I don't regret that vote because it was a specific matter, a specific location. That was bordering an industrial park where no homes had any business being there in the first place. It's not the residents' fault, but it was next to an industrial park. So in this case, you're gonna take a swath of land where there is no industry, industry anywhere. And create a location like game on, if you will. That is a different circum, set of circumstances for me. So I am not against opening those areas up to some of these kinds of uses, but. I'm not in favor of skiing, I'm not in favor of zip line trails, campgrounds, horseback riding, athletic fields, courts. I mean, if you have a soccer field out there. There's gonna be tons of people parking. So. I'm all in favor of the, of the commercial indoor recreation as stated, I will support that. The outdoor recreation, um, as stated in here, I will support all of the other areas. Other than rural residential, unless this reflects boating, fishing, uh, hiking and, and snowshoeing. I'm not supporting this. This, this is, this is having it both ways to me. I appreciate the effort done, but when I read this outdoor recreational definition, there's a lot of indoor use here too. Or there's going to be a lot of need for structures to be built, possibly. So I'm, I'm against, I, I'm against that definition. And if no one wants to change the definition, then I'll be voting no on having this be a PB area in rural residential. I think it should stay no. So I'm all set with the commercial indoor. I am not all set with the commercial outdoor, unless that definition is significantly limited to four or five uses. That are truly outdoor uses that don't require you to knock anything down or build structures to support it. So I, I, I'll leave it at that, and I, you know, I wanted to make that distinction because I don't want to sound like a hypocrite because of my support of game on. Unless there is a huge industrial complex in one of these areas, to be consistent, I'd probably support it. We're talking about areas that have no industry, no commercial activity as it is, this is wide open fields. So that was a very special case because of that designation, so I, I'm not gonna support that first one. Nope, thank you.
Thank you, uh, I have councillor Boishman next, if you'll permit me briefly councillor, I'd like to make a suggestion.
Yeah, sir, you got your chair.
Thank you. I, I do, but I don't like to, you know, throw my weight around if I don't have to. So, it sounds like a lot of good concerns are being raised here. Might I suggest that we perhaps approve the twin definitions as opposed to the single definition? And leave it restricted in rural residential for the moment with the intention that we then draft. Some additional permit requirements for outdoor recreation in the rural residential area. Which would address, for example, maximum lock coverage of structures and parking areas. Setbacks from the road for structures and parking areas. So that if you have, say, two hundred and fifty acres and you wanna put. One acre of that setback well from the road for parking and structures, and the rest is all whatever. Uh, that's different than if you have five acres and you've got a big building right up near the road. Um, with a sea of asphalt around it. It's, I think there's a way we can do it. With additional regulation to address all these concerns and still allow for. Perhaps broader uses than just these sort of park and walk into nature kind of uses. Um, but that being said, uh, councillor Boishman, you have the floor.
My question is. Um, my question is this. I'm reading the outdoors, outdoor recreation and I'm reading the indoor recreation, recreation. And what I don't understand is that, number one, number, if I own the property up there, I wouldn't want people to tell me what I can do and what I can't do. As long as, if it's my piece of land, if I wanted to put, if I own three hundred acres. And I wanted to put a trailer in for zip cord, I can. If I wanna say skiing, I can. It's my land, it, it meets the qualifications and I get the hills to do it. Why wouldn't you stop me, number one? But my question to you is. You got over here for indoor golf simulator, but you got for outdoor, the golf driving range. Well, if you get, why wouldn't you have two and two together? I mean, for the people that wanna go up there and use the driving range, or the people that wanna go up there and use the simulator. Uh, it's all indoors and they're playing the same game, golf. You know, that's, I don't know, when I, when I hear councillor Dean Tally talk about their game on. Everything that, that the city tried, if I recall right, if I remember right, but I wasn't on the council back then. They wanted to make it an industrial park and the residents fought it. They wanted to, so the guy came back with this proposal and the residents fought it. Uh, and then they didn't even want, if I'm not mistaken, you were gonna get about fifty to a hundred homes up there or better. And they probably would have fought that. You know, I don't know, it, it. I, I don't know how I feel on this one here, I, I don't like to put, I, I like restrictions, I keep on saying I like trees. And I don't like to knock all the trees down, but I'm talking about near the road and that, if I own the land and I'm building a house or, or place, why can't you? You know? Uh, that's all I have to say about it. I just don't like this. Indoor recreation and you're taking it away from the other place where you get golf. Driving range here and a mini golf thing, and yet you won't let the golf stimulate or you won't have a drive. You know, because it's just got a driving range and you're inside of a building. I don't understand that. That's all I wanna say. I can understand a rolling ring. A bow and alley, you get that downtown, climbing a wall, I think that would be great, you know, out there. On that, alright, that's it for me.
Just to clarify, the distinction between both lists of specific uses or just illustrations. The real distinction is, is it taking place inside a building or outdoors? That said, I have councillor Schultz. Councillor Schultz?
Thank you councillor Zarella, um, my feeling is that, uh. You know, as councillor Fleming, uh, so eloquently stated, we've really gotta look at this. Whether or not we wanna keep rural residential, rural residential, I mean. To, you know, to, to find outdoor versus indoor, we're still gonna be changing the landscape of the rural residential area. And, uh. You know, uh, I think councillor Squalia mentioned, well, you know, property values will go down, so our revenue will go down. Uh, and, and also, I mean, people move to resi, to rural residential because they wanna. They wanna have trees, they wanna have open space, they don't wanna have, uh, uh, these other. Uses for the, for that area, so. Uh, I, I'm really not in favor of having these definitions at all, but I, and I agree with councillor Dean Tally that game on was a different situation. And for us to develop or have any kind of development at rural residential. We really, it really has to be a special circumstance, in my opinion. So that's what I have to say about the subject, thank you.
Next I have councillor Ben Hasinger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, just to address a couple of concerns that have been raised. So, some, a, a use identified as skiing is really in a reference to cross-country skiing. Um, we don't have any mountains in Fitchburg that would be sufficient to have downhill skiing, cross-country skiing uses the same trails that you hike in the summertime. Or you would snowshoe on, it doesn't require the clearing of land. Um, accessory indoor uses are mentioned specifically because even when uses take place outside, like hiking or snowshoeing. You still need, if you have a, a business that rents out cross-country skis or snowshoes and grooms trails and maintains them. They need an office, they need storage for the, the, the equipment they rent out. So even when the primary use occurs outside, there are some supportive accessory indoor of structures you may have to support them. And I think some of the concerns raised, uh, by councillor Fleming in, in her conversations with residents are not too specific. Um, record, outdoor recreational uses, they seem to be towards development in general. And I think that's an important distinction, that a lot of these uses would actually seek to maintain the rural nature of the north side of the city. That. If you have hiking trails, snow true, skiing, snowshoeing trails, skiing trails, if you have campgrounds. These preserve the wooded areas, they keep them from being developed, because really, the alternative use that is allowed in our ordinance is single-family house lots. So if you were to take the north, it's north side of Fitchburg and divide it into sixty-five thousand square foot house lots. It would have a much more significant impact on eliminating this asset that our city has. And it is, it is an asset to our city that we have everything from a university at downtown, train to Boston. And you go to North Fitchburg and you have large swaths of undeveloped land. And that's an asset that we should take advantage of as a city. And if you're going to say, say that these types of uses aren't allowed in the rural residential area, you're really saying you can't have campgrounds anywhere in the city. Because that's where it would take place. And I don't think that is an oppressive use, and I think it's important to distinguish too that the definition of the commercial outdoor recreational uses. Specify that it is compatible with this neighboring uses, which are predominantly single-family homes. On large lots, that it's in the definition that it can only have a light to moderate impact. That if you have a development that requires an outside amount of parking. It has to be cited so it doesn't impact neighboring uses, that the roads are sufficient to, to support traffic to this use. Um, it was also mentioned that the desire for, to cap the number of these types of uses, I think part of the problem isn't such a wide definition. Because there's such a wide types of recreational use that it really doesn't make sense if you have in the north Fitchburg. So, you know, a, a sportsman's club with, uh, with fishing and swimming on a pond. How is that comparable to a campground or comparable to a, a horse riding stable? That there's so many different kinds of uses that it, it, it's defining how you would cap that and do that. I, it just does not seem workable, and it really, I don't see as desirable. Because this is something that makes our city a more attractive place to live. It makes it a more attractive place to visit for people to come, to spend money here, to spend time here. That these are all uses that benefit our city and we should support, and a lot of them, if they're gonna take place, they're gonna take place in the rural residential area. And if we don't allow them there, we're simply not gonna have them, we're just leaving money on the table, we're leaving opportunities on the table. That these types of uses help preserve the rural nature, the, the wooded nature of, of our city in these areas. And it makes our city a better place to live, it makes our city a better place to visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor, uh, I have both councillors Boishman and Fleming looking to speak on this for the second time. I'm going to go first councillor Walsh, who has not yet spoken.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I, I agree with councillor Ben Hasinger, I, I think that, um, that, that limiting. Uh, generally, you know, across the board, numbers of, of uses in, in commercial outdoor recreation. It, it doesn't really make much sense, we've limited the number, we, we limit the number of, of cannabis, um. Uh, retail sale outlets, that makes sense. Yeah, uh, retail sale outlets, that makes sense, they're all the same, these are, these are different uses. I, and I, I do like, um, councillor Zarella's suggestion that perhaps we could. And, and where the language says characterized by light to moderate impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. Um, maybe that definition could be better developed so that we understand what light to moderate impact really means. Um, and, and perhaps that's where we, we need to go. Um, I, I, I don't want to see, um, any, any use, you know, completely banned. In a, in a specific area, just because it might possibly have a, a, a detrimental impact. On one piece of property, on one landowner, um, I, I think that's a drastic, um, a drastic solution. It, it does, just doesn't make sense to me, thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Bochum, for the second time.
Listen, it wasn't for the second time, but I'd just say one thing, I didn't really want to talk, but I'll have to give credit to Andy, did a good job there, I agree with him. I don't want to see solar farms, I'm sick of solar farms too, they're taking all the good land away, that's all I have to say, that's it.
Thank you, I have, uh, I'm sorry councillor Dean Attali, have I already had you on this issue, I'm checking back, I think I have, yes. Alright, in that case councillor Fleming.
Okay, so what I guess what I failed to mention too is, the other big complaint I get is traffic and noise. Lots of traffic and lots of noise from some of the activities we have out here already. Again, when most of these activity would be occurring, would be on weekends and in summer, during the summer. And that's when most people are home, so it would affect people, um, like I said, I'm not against something being put in there. But I really believe that it needs to be capped, because I feel further down the road. If there's enough of these structures, you know, commercial outdoor recreation uses, then is the rural residential. Then becomes commercial residential. That's a fear and a possibility, it, it is the what if. What if in three years we have a completely different. Planning board and a different zoning board, who think differently than the current. Those are the, those are the things that we have to think about, so if we could, we only allow a few. I'm okay with that, how much, how much land is there in North Pittsburgh? That, if, look, how many acres can we get a rough idea?
It's almost half the city.
It's almost half the city, and but a majority of that land is ledge. Which blasting would be required. That, that makes a big impact, not only on the people living there, but on the environment itself. I really, I guess I have a problem with taking trees away, which are green, to go green. And we're doing that right now because we have to put solar farms in. And you know, we can't say no to them and they're, and they're popping up everywhere and all the beauty of what used to be trees is now. You know, unattractive structures. And, you know, these are concerns, nobody wants this stuff in their backyard, people may be for it, but. Nobody wants it in their backyard, I understand there's, there's maybe a market for it. But I say we use, you know, what we can in the areas that are already zoned for it and. And try to get this to where we can limit it, to how many we can have. Because I guess this brings an outdoor peak, you know, people from out of town, but if we have enough people. Buying in the city, as long as we have places for them to go downtown. You know, I think we should start there and build out, so. Let's limit how many of these structures we can have or uses for recreation. I mean, it's the only. Thing that you added into this table use, which, you know, which, you know, threw me for a loop when I saw it. And. And I. I'd like to maybe put this on hold and maybe further investigate. And fine tune it a little bit more. I mean, cause technically you could have one development that does all this stuff. Where there would be no impact on the neighbors or on the roads.
Zarella, could I speak?
Uh, I don't believe we have a motion, we had the motion withdrawn, correct? Uh, yes, in that case, yes, uh, Mr. Skrowski, you may speak.
Okay, councillor Fleming, I appreciate you kind of indulging me with the last few weeks as we've been going through various iterations of this. The, the reason this was the one. Item added to the use table was because the, the impetus for this whole effort was to respond to the economic development strategic plan. And that item was called out specifically to make commercial recreation allowable by planning board's special permit. It was one of the hundred eighty action items, we wanted to carry it over, um, you know, we also did note in, in that strategic plan. That, uh, you know, one of our eight goals was to highlight at our natural amenities to turn Pittsburgh into a regional center. For tourism and recreation, and so this is sort of tied to that. But we also did say as our mission statement, we have urban living surrounded by picturesque rural landscape. And I think that last piece is also an important part of our strategic plan, and I know that's what you're really trying to advocate for here and advocating for your ward in that respect. And I completely appreciate the concerns, um, I think there's just one thing I wanted to bring up for the record. When something's allowed by a special permit, it's not an automatic yes, um, it often is characterized as such, but that's a. Inaccurate characterization, you essentially have to follow these criteria to receive any special permit for any use in the city. Um, and social, economic or community needs are served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading are met. Adequacy of utilities and public services, neighborhood character, impacts on the natural environment and potential fiscal impact. Um, the planning board or ZBA essentially need to find that all these criteria are met. Um, as an example, just put in practice in the last month, we had a developer come to the city that was looking to build a large condo development. In the rural residential neighborhood, um, and actually in your ward and this would be allowed by a special permit as a planned unit development. Um, but when this person met with the mayor and myself, you know, we had noted, the site had no water and sewer. The roads were insufficient, it didn't have proper access in and out of the property, and it was too close to a wetland. And what we told the developer was, you can certainly go through the process and try to get your special permit, but I think you're going to have a hard. Chance meeting all of those requirements, and I would add that the department heads all need to comment and provide feedback. And the planning board acts on that feedback, um, and so I think we were able to see, yes, it's allowed by special permit, but. Special permit is just that it's special, it says in unique circumstances, such a use would be allowable. And in that case, we had said it wasn't going to fly, and I think. You know, this gives the planning board discretion to determine which uses comply with that criteria. Um, I completely respect the opinion of, well, what happens in future planning boards? I think we've got a pretty great one today, but I understand the point there, um, I guess if. Changes were made to add more rigorous criteria or to place a limit, um. I'm suspecting that either of those things were they to happen, it probably wouldn't happen within the scope of this, these zoning changes and. I, I guess councillor Zarella, I'll defer to you there, I, if, if that's the case and we were to close things up and keep this as an end. It is something we could revisit, of course, it's a bit of a process, but, um, anyway, I, I appreciate all the considerations here, I think. Uh, you know, it's, it's a difficult decision, um, but you know, on my part, we're responding to the one-year-long strategic planning effort. That we underwent.
Thank you, I have, uh, councillor Dean Attali for the second time. I guess for me, I, I don't know who on this council was there during the game on thing. But I'm still gun shy from that vote. I remember that all too well and the massive amount of opposition to it. And I didn't have any hesitation about that one because of what I said earlier about it being next to an industrial park. Here you're just creating something out of thin air, there's nothing abutting it, it's wide open space. And I, I hate this discussion because I knew this may turn into. Not seeing anyone here is accusing me of this, but this may come across as, I don't want to expand the horizon and open the city up to more development. It's not what I'm saying. The councillor Schultz said it earlier about preserving the natural landscape of our city as well. I guess for me to go along with this, I need to know exactly what areas we're talking about and where the wetlands are. Because I, I'm going to be very specific with it. Because it's, it's a guarantee that no matter where these things go, the residents in those areas aren't going to be happy with it. Ninety-nine percent chance they're going to be fully against it. And I think as councillor Fleming said, it has more to do with traffic and noise than actually what activity is taking place. And in the definition as stated about outdoor recreational use, you will still need structures, you will still need parking. And it will still attract scores of people to that area. So, I'm all for expanding our horizons, but I'll tell you. I, I almost want to make this be a council decision every time this comes up, and we'll see how some people feel about it. See for me, and I'm speaking just for myself, by putting it on the planning board, it's easy for me to say yes to it because I don't have to deal with it. Alright, let the council deal with it and some people may think differently, once they see a hundred and fifty people at the, at the meeting. So, I'm just, based on my experience, maybe that's why I'm gun shy on this, I remember that time all too vividly. And, um. So, I mean, I don't know how we're going to go forward with this tonight, I, I mean, I guess I would have to pinpoint and see what we're talking about here. I know we say North Pittsburgh, but where are the wetlands, where can't we develop, you know? Are we talking about, are we talking about spaces that are five, that are ten acres away from the nearest house? Councillor, on the screen right now, if you look briefly.
Everything yellow is the rural residential neighborhoods. Um, everything you see that's green are, are classified as wetlands. And, and development can't take place, you know, within the buffer zone, um. So, and certainly not on top of the wetlands themselves. So it's everything you see is yellow, I'm going to go ahead and. Get rid of the parcel lines, it messes up the map a little bit.
You know, do we know, Tom, how many acres that is?
You know, I did. That doesn't seem right, it says eight hundred forty-eight, I just clicked on the shape. I mean, it's a lot of land. I could. Do a pretty quick and unscientific estimate as you all liberate.
So, so, so I'm, I'm going to go back to game on again for another reason. That was another instance where literally the, the path to get there was right through a, a housing complex. You know, if, if we're talking about a location where it is five or seven acres away from the nearest house, then maybe I'd be amenable to it. But if it's like an acre away from a house or two acres away from a house, that's pretty damn close. So, I mean, ma- maybe I'm coming down on the line of, I'm not going to shut the door entirely on voting for this. But I have to have more details about the regs are, because. I, I mean, I could just shut the door in this night and say I'll vote for it because it's the planning board's problem, it's not my problem. You know, but I, I, part of me wants to say make it the council's problem, but see if the council will support these things when they come up. I mean, can we do that, can we, can we have this be a council decision every time this comes up? You. In theory, yes, we can, in practice, we've been moving away from that as much as possible. Uh, there used to be several uses that got sent straight to the council and the council before my time, but I don't believe before yours councillor. Uh, decided that that was far too cumbersome and kicked it off to the zoning board and planning board. If, if, if that is what we did, except for game on, because that was an overlay district that we had to vote on exactly, so we didn't vote on. Project, we voted on creating the district, allowing the project to continue. So, in this case, we wouldn't have to do that, it would never come before us, um. I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll end with this, because I'm, I'm, I'm repeating myself and I shouldn't, but the definition as written for the outdoor use. Still gives me concerns about traffic, about structures being built. As councillor Van Hasinger correctly said, you're going to need bathrooms, office space, storage. You're still going to have to construct facilities up there, you're still going to have to have enough parking, which is going to require clearing the lots. You're still going to have noise and you're going to have a lot of traffic, am I against expanding the city's ability to do that stuff, no I'm not, but. It's a very small, it's a very big balancing act, one question for you, Mr. President, is if we kept it as a no. Can they still go to the zoning board for a variance? No, they cannot, we do not allow use variances in a residential district. Good, good distinction, so good, good, good caveat, because that was going to be my out on this, and since we can't do that, then. I, I guess where I'm coming down on this folks is, I don't like the definition as written. I, I, I'm amenable to allowing this use under a planning board special permit, but I, there has to be a lot more. Detail about what would satisfy that than not, I, I just. There are some uses listed in there that I think are counterproductive to what we're trying to say in terms of preserving a natural landscape. Some of those things you can make an argument, yeah, they're outdoor, but they're still going to attract hundreds and hundreds of people. So. So I'm not against it all, but I'm against some of it, I guess what I'm saying, so.
Councillor Dean Attali, um, if I may, I guess to answer one question, ninety-three hundred acres. Um, roughly on my back of the envelope analysis just now, so a lot of land, um.
And that is only the, that is only the large area in the upper left, not the small area at the bottom center, I noticed. Just, just to be clear.
Yeah, largely Oak Hill Country Club, um, and a couple other smaller parcels, but, you know, plus or minus. Uh, a little over nine thousand acres, um. It, it actually sounds like what you're saying is it's really a question of placing additional standards on what this use would look like as opposed to the definition itself. It's similar to what we did with earth removal, it's already allowed by this special permit, uh, granting authority. But as part of these changes, we had added a whole section, multiple pages laying out what the standards would look like, when it would be acceptable. Et cetera, and, and perhaps that's what, what's being suggested here.
That's, that is what I'm, that, that is my hangup is. Not so much the definition, but if you're going to allow some of those items in that definition, there's going to be some real defined. Requirements for putting something out there. Right, okay councillor, I, I'm sorry to cut you off, I really am, it's just we're getting close to midnight and we have to by statute be done by midnight. Okay. Uh, so. Uh. I'm going to go to the other councillors who are waiting to speak and then we'll see if the consensus is either to. Allow it, to deny it entirely, or to deny it for the time being with the anticipation that we will. Develop further standards and then allow it. Uh, alright, so I have councillor Schultz for the second time.
Thank you councillor Zarella, I, uh, I, I was considering what councillor Dean Attali said earlier about the, the uses for. Outdoor recreational and I, I really, uh, agree that we've got, uh, some uses that are really going to probably cause problems. For rural residential and, uh, I really, I really think we need to, uh, really look at those uses and really, uh. Decide whether or not we want to support them, I, I really, at this time, I don't think I can support all of those, all of those uses. Um. Uh, so I guess that's, that's where, where I wanted to leave it, I, I think, uh, I would be supportive if, if it was, uh. You know, limited, so I think maybe we should, uh. Make some revisions to that, to that definition, the outdoor recreational division, and the other thing is, we've got, we've, like he, like, uh. Councillor Dean Attali said, we, we're going to need some structures to support some of those, uh, endeavors, so I think, uh, that's, that's certainly, uh. A, a huge consideration, I think if we, if we approve this as is. And I, I don't want to take up too much time, but thank you for the time.
I have a question on your last statement, um, President Zarella, you're muted also.
Councillor Squallia, I'm going to ask you, uh, actually, no, you know what, actually, I don't believe you've spoken on this issue yet. So.
Have a question on.
Go, go ahead.
On, on the statute, um. On, on the statute, um, you, you said we could deny it or whatever you said, the three things. Can't we also just uh lay this on the table and continue the hearing?
We could councillor, the problem would be that would hold up the entirety of the zoning ordinance. And if we're going to draft new standards for this, it's probably going to be a fairly lengthy endeavor, going back and forth several times. Um. This, this would require a fairly large body of new language if we wanted to uh add requirements that. Are not in existence in any form at the moment. Um, it is an option, certainly is something the council could move for. Uh, it simply would hold up the entirety of the remaining zoning ordinance. Uh, I have councillor Van Hazenga for the second time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to address the idea of adding additional restrictions or criteria to the uses. And part of the problem with that is that they vary so greatly, not just according to the use, but also according to the specific plan in the parcel. Where each um proposed instance of where this could happen could be completely different and would require different considerations. So it would be near impossible to have a blanket set of criteria that would have to be. Met and would be appropriate for every possible development under this use item. Therefore, the idea is to put this responsibility on the planning board as a special permit granting authority. And in the definition of this use, it makes it clear what is acceptable is something that is compatible with this area. And. Uh, Mr. Skrowski outlined the, the criteria that has to be met for a special permit in general. But this definition goes farther because it calls out in the definition. That it can't have a severe uh impact on neighborhood traffic. On uh neighborhood properties with issues like noise or, or things like that. That the idea is really to allow uses that are compatible with this area of the city. And it really highlights that the definition and requires the planning board to consider that. And when they're evaluating the appropriateness of any proposed development on a case by case basis, and it really has to be. On a case by case basis, because there's no blanket set of criteria that would be appropriate or fitting for every possible. Use, and I think it's also important to consider that a lot of these uses. Are, you know, in, in place, e- even though the, it's not allowed by the zoning ordinance. If you look at the idea of hiking or snowshoeing or crush, crush the skiing, that are already happens in this area at Simon Park. And what it does is, is, the, sure, that would be a grandfathered use, but if someone else in another area of the city wanted to have. Maintain trails to groom it in the winter, to allow, you know, to, to rent out snowshoes and crush, crushy skis, and it would allow this to happen. And I think. People are, are, are getting very worried about what could happen, but I think it's important to look at the intent of this allowed use. And it's really to allow things to take advantage of the amenities and the resources we have in these areas. And to really be compatible with these areas, and that, that's called out in the definition. So I think it, it doesn't make sense to concentrate on the worst possible outcome because we're trying to address that. In what is, you know, allowed i- in, in the intent that's called out in the definition, thank you.
Thank you, and I, I see councillor Fleming, I, I'm sorry, but you have actually exhausted both of your two opportunities. Speak on this matter. Um. So if there is no one else seeking to speak on this matter, I would like to. Uh, declare the hearing clo- well, no, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself, I would like to entertain a motion. For one of the possible outcomes on this uh table, Tom, if you could please bring up the table again so we can see what we're voting on.
Sure thing. Okay, so, option one, I suppose, would be to keep as is with either. The Legislative Affairs Def- Definition, or Legislative Affairs PB. Or the Economic Development Committees and, and then.
Oh.
So I'm going, I'm actually going to uh jump in for a moment, just in the interest of time. Uh, can I first have a motion, if, if anyone would like to make one, on splitting out the definitions of indoor and outdoor commercial recreation? Irrespective of whether we're satisfied with how they look at the moment.
So I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and second to split this into two rows, indoor commercial recreation and outdoor commercial recreation. With definitions at least somewhat conforming to the drafts provided by uh Mr. Skrowski.
It was just to add the definitions and nothing else right now.
Yes, this is not changing the table, except to add an additional line which will, at the moment, be identical to the current line. Um. Anyone, if there is no objection, we will do this by unanimous consent, any objection? Seeing none, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. Uh, now, we are debating, I, I think it is unanimous, correct me if I'm wrong. That we are going to have indoor commercial, commercial recreation barred from the RR district. Am I, is there anyone who intended indoor commercial recreation to be permitted in the RR district? Okay.
I would move that we uh, uh, change from planning board in the commercial district for indoor commercial recreation. To a yes, we have it in a yes in the, in the, what's that, NB and DB. It should, I believe it should be yes and also commercial.
Uh, councillor, you are, of course, within your rights to make that motion, I would request that we hold off on that until we address the. Rural residential, just so we can stay on topic as much as possible and get through this.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it, um. So what we are currently trying to decide is for outdoor commercial recreation. Whether we are going to allow it in the rural residential by planning board special permit. Not allow it at all. Or uh not allow it with a directive to the community development and legal departments. To come up with a definition uh that will add restrictions uh for a future allowance. Uh, again, any, any fourth option that anyone would like to request? Uh, everyone is free to do so, I'm just laying out what I see as three options that have been discussed by the council.
Move, we'll allow it as proposed uh with planning board approval.
Okay, I, I have a motion and second to allow it under the current terms. Uh, by planning board approval in rural residential. Uh. Anyone speaking on the motion with comments that have not already been made? Seeing none, uh, madam clerk, would you please call, uh, I'm sorry, I have councillor Dean Natale, do you have something that has not already been said?
Yeah, um, just to clarify, this is to accept the indoor commercial and the outdoor commercial as stated on here?
Uh, indoor commercial is not, not in question at the moment, this is for outdoor commercial in rural residential by, by planning board special permit.
So I, I will, I will say what I didn't say earlier, and that is. Um. Councillor Van Hazenga has made some compelling arguments to me. Uh, he is right that I am thinking about worst case scenarios. Uh, and he's also correct in that. There are, this is going to be a very difficult thing to diva- define when you have such a swa- large swath of territory. That you, you may not be able to paint everything with a broad brush. And because I do want the development to occur where it will not cause an impact to the, the population. Um. I, I will put my faith in the planning board that they will thoroughly vet and review these items. And make sure that they are very uh cognizant of the impacts to the neighborhood. Um, for right now, and because of those reasons, I will support the planning board. Designation for outdoor commercial, and, and um I've been convinced that I need to. Think of this holistically and not just pick out one specific instance that I. I was used to, that I experienced a long time ago, that's just making me very, very nervous, but um, I'm, I'm willing to. Give it a chance and see what comes out of it considering that, so thank you.
Thank you councillor, uh, any further uh comments on the motion? Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Hi.
Councillor Van Hazenga.
Yes.
Councillor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councillor Boishman.
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councillor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Need a second. No.
Councillor Hughes.
Yes.
That is nine to one.
Motion passes, uh councillor Squallia, I believe you had a motion relative to the commercial district.
Yes, indoor commercial recreation, a move that we change uh from planning board approval from the commercial district to yes.
Second.
What? I have a motion and second to allow indoor commercial recreation as a by right use in the commercial district. Uh, speaking on the motion. Uh. If there is no objection, uh, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is the sense of the council that it should be done.
That's it for the use table.
Alright, can I have a motion on the use table as a whole?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, is there any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. These last two, I think, are going to be very quick, let's try and get through this.
Knock on wood, um, so the, the map amendment have to treat a bit differently in that there are no reconciliation items per se. Um, I believe there were a few additions that came out of Legislative Affairs. It was too complicated to parse them out, basically what you all are seeing on the map and, and the link that you had received. Anything that is highlighted with sort of a black overlay with blue lettering. Was a planning board recommendation that was approved by both committees. Anything that was highlighted in a yellow with black text, that was from both of the committees combined. And, and I, I don't know if we want to handle this by going through each and every district, um, looking at the. The changes here, um, rural residential is yellow, RA is sort of a beige. RB a pink, RC gold, neighborhood business district is. You know, you guys can see the colors just as well as I can, I'm not going to read them. Um, this, of course, is industrial, not incestrial. Um, but I'll, I'll leave it at that and defer to you councillor Zarella on how you'd like to handle the map amendment portion. I could also go back to the PowerPoint and review it in detail, kind of the major changes.
Uh, well, personally, I would be satisfied to just. Ask if anyone has any changes that they noted when they were looking over the materials. Uh. And otherwise, take it as a whole in the interest of time, but I will not restrict anyone's ability to. Debate or discuss more detailed amendments, uh councillor Squallia.
Yes, I, I only had one um question about the map and um it was from uh. Um, it's the Summer Street area where the funeral home is, Tom. You know, uh, where the, the, is the senior living center, Pittsburgh. Uh, Pittsburgh something, and then there's the, the funeral home, I think it's, it's Sawyer. Uh, yes, this is, it's the area um that's going to be residential.
Right, so this area is zoned RC currently. Um, I believe this is the property you're discussing, or, or is it this one right here?
Yes, that, yes, that area.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, just the more I've been thinking about it since that meeting, you know, I've gotten a number of noise complaints from the, the few residential houses. That are uh north of that um funeral home, a lot of noise complaints of, of cars driving. On Summer Street and, you know, the police say there's not really much that they can do. Um, so, you know, I was just thinking i- i- if that area should be residential. Um, or if that should also be more of a commercial kind of corridor on both sides of the street for the future. Um, I don't know, to allow the, if there was some way to allow the, the houses to, that are there to remain, but also to allow. Commercial business use.
And you're, is there a particular stretch that you?
Yeah, that, that kind of stretch you just highlighted there.
Okay, so essentially here over.
Yeah, I don't know what the other councillors' thoughts are, but the, the more I've been thinking about it since that meeting, the more I'm. Disappointed I didn't move to, to suggest that it also be as it, as it is across the street business district.
So I will just note councillor that uh one of the characteristics of the RC district is that it allows for residential as well as like. Commercial use, uh, as opposed to the RA or RB, which is more of a sort of pure residential. Um, I can't think of any other district off the top of my head. Where residential uses are by right and also uh allows commercial. Um, so I'm not, I think we'd have to pick a specific district we want to change it to, uh, if we want to change that.
Okay, I'd just like to hear councillor, if councillor Ben Hazenga has a, a comment.
Oh, yes, thank you, I'm sorry, I looked away from the chat to look at the map, uh councillor Ben Hazenga.
Um, so really, most of those uses along that side of the street are residential, with the exception of the funeral home. Which is technically a home, it's, you know, if it wasn't going to be a funeral home. It could be transferred to other uses, but it also, like President Zarella said. It's currently zoned RC, it's proposed to be kept RC, which does allow a variety of commercial uses, including restaurants. Um, offices, retail, medical offices, all with uh permission of the Board of Appeals. So it doesn't necessarily restrict the use of that property for the most likely uses, and I, I think it. Makes sense to just keep it in line with everything else, because those other parcels are all houses and they really shouldn't be changed to. Neighborhood business or downtown business, and I think it does, the present proposal does allow for a variety of commercial and residential uses. For that single property.
Okay.
And if you've noticed as councillor Ben Hazenga was speaking, I was just pulling up. The, the properties themselves, so you get a, a sense of what we're looking at here in the district.
Okay, great, that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, uh, any further comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the revised map. If there is no objection, we will do this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Okay, the last one is going to be very easy, uh, it's just the deletion of the overlay districts, one of the goals of this whole effort. Was to remove all our overlays, which is basically, it's a planner's way of applying a Band-Aid to our zoning ordinance when things don't quite fit. Um, we have created an adaptive reuse district to take the place of the mill conversion overlay. All properties in the downtown no longer have commercial parking requirements, so there's no longer a need for the municipal parking overlay district. The student housing overlay district has never really been used twice and once unsuccessfully. So we are proposing to strike that, one could still build student housing within the ordinance, just not here. Uh, under this component, the West Pittsburgh corridor overlay. Through this whole effort, we went throughout the entire map in parts of West Pittsburgh and reclassified industrial properties. Into various forms of commercial and neighborhood business. Um, designation, so there's no longer a need for that overlay. The Westminster Hill Road Commercial Recreation Overlay District is now part of the. The Westminster Hill Road Commercial Recreation Overlay District is now part of the Commercial Recreation District. Um so this would basically just formalize all the decisions you just made on your last vote and many votes before it. By eliminating these uh overlay sections of our ordinance.
Move to express our approval of the deletion.
Second.
I have a motion and second, if there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. And if all have been heard on this, on the totality of phase two zoning changes. I declare the hearing closed, and the matter is before the council for final approval.
Move to express our approval.
Second.
Speaking on motion.
Uh just one moment, uh councillor, I would request that this actually be a motion to approve the petition. Uh this is our final action on this matter.
Move to approve the petition.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second, and speaking on the motion, I have councillor Ben Hasengah.
Thank you, Mr. President, um I would like to say that this is not a small undertaking. It has taken a lot of time and a lot of work by a lot of people. Uh we had the 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 task force putting in initial input, we had the, you know, the planning board, we have the various committees in the city council meeting. Many hours to go through this, and we have the community development staff that has really. Worked very hard on this, and it's taken a lot of effort, but I think we made some very good and necessary changes to the zoning ordinance. And I think this will benefit the city for a long time, and I think we're moving in the right direction, thank you.
Thank you, I would like to second that in its entirety, uh this has been an enormous endeavor, it's been long, long needed. Uh and. I think that the amount of hours that have been put in, particularly by Tom Skrowski on this. Uh. We all owe a lot of gratitude, and this is going to be something that I think zoning boards and planning boards. Into the next decade are going to be uh singing your praises for. So thank you, and let's put this to bed.
Well, thank you all, it's been a truly collaborative effort, appreciate everyone's support, you guys are here until eleven thirty today, so you know, we're all in this together, thank you.
Thank you, uh all right, I have a motion and second, uh is there any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, it is approved. We will see this again in an indeterminate, but hopefully relatively short amount of time in ordinance form. And. We are now done with this uh zoning change.
Thank you.
We have a couple more items on the agenda, which will not, I don't believe, require debate, and then we can all go to sleep. Uh. We have an ordinance zero forty-four twenty-one. Uh to strike section three dash two oh eight entitled Deputy Procurement Officer and replace with three dash two oh eight. Procurement support staff that will be sent to Legislative Affairs. Uh and we have petitions zero forty-five twenty-one and zero forty-six twenty-one, which will respectively be sent to public safety and to Legislative Affairs. There is an erroneous listing that zero forty-six twenty-one will also be sent to public safety, that is not actually going to happen. Uh and that concludes our agenda for this evening.
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, if there is no objection, if I don't need to strangle anyone for objecting. Then we are adjourned.
Mr. President, can you tell Tom I'll see him at eight thirty tomorrow morning?
I think he's still here and you can tell him yourself.